Good evening and welcome to the December 15, 2014, meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with the announcements. Stephen, you had something?
Yes, Richard. Unfortunately, there's been reports of some house break-ins recently, and, you know, our police department's doing everything they can to mitigate these occurrences, but we really want to encourage people to make sure that they lock their doors, if they have alarms, doors and windows, if they lock, if they have an alarm system, please use it. And if you don't have great lighting around your house, we encourage people to, you know, install motion detector spotlights and things like that. And of course, if you notice anybody kind of wandering through the neighborhood late at night, be sure and call the police department and let them know, because it seems like they're kind of, they get localized, will have a handful in a certain neighborhood, and then they'll go to another neighborhood, and so we want to make sure that we prevent this from expanding.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, we're going to move into resident comments. We have a large group of residents that look like they're going to comment tonight, so we'd like to, possible, have each resident limited to three minutes on their discussion. Resident comments do come towards the board, and there's, at this point, there's no interaction that goes back and forth between the residents and the comments. This is your point, to express your views to the board. Would the first person who'd like to speak come up and take the mic? Richard, would you like to speak first? Let Richard come up. Each resident will be asked, when you come up, to state your name and address for the record.
I'd say an enormous amount of time is spent on the term "quality of life" at these Select Board meetings, and it's all meant for the betterment of the town and everything. You've got a couple of issues coming up tonight that you'll be making decisions on. First, let's look at the street with Quinnipiac, and there's a few questions that really should be asked. First off, why was it opened up? Second, everybody agrees that the traffic on that, the street was never designed for that. We have to look at the quality of life for those people that are living on that street. When I moved to Long Meadow, I was more than happy to be on Frank Smith Road with a lot of traffic, because I knew the street was going to be plowed, and if you got really bored, you could watch the traffic go by, if nothing else. I like that. But most of the people, I think, came in because they wanted to have a place for their children to grow up. The information that came back, they didn't have any record of accidents on that street. That could be true. People don't have to file a report if it's not anything serious, but I talked to a resident on that street, who was a doctor, that said he did go out to assist at accidents that happened on that street. The street is not designed for what it's being used for. The subject of speed bumps, does that help? Well, considering up until this year, most of our cross streets in town were a series of speed bumps, our major arteries, and that didn't stop anybody or slow anybody down, they just got used to it. And they were going da-da-da-da-da, same speed that they always did. There's no reason to ask that that be not taken care of. So I think the original thing of closing that street, unless you can look back and see why they opened it to begin with, were there hearings on that? What was the answer on that? Whether they just decided at some point for the developer, "Ah, let's put this street out." Was that ever approved? I don't know. Those are questions. The second part of the thing that's starting tonight is what's going to happen for the Long Meadow shops. There are good things and bad things on both sides of this. What I'm looking at right now is that area is zoned for residents. The church is zoned for residents, and I understand the church is up for sale. What's going to happen? I don't know. But are they going to ask to have it extended to the property where the church is on? The value of that church and that land there is not as great as regular residential land, because that would have to be knocked down, and you can't put a business in it, because they just have a variance. And last but not least, as we get through the, towards the end of this year, there's still time for the residents of this town to make a check out to the town's fund for the quint truck. It's tax deductible, it'll be taken off of this year's taxes, and it's going to save you money in the future. All right, thank you.
Are you heading up? Thank you, Rich.
Joseph Rinaldi, Robert Rinaldi, 77 Ridge Road. Tonight, we're here to talk about the change to the tax system that was made on December 1st of the tax classification hearing. As you all know, we moved to a split tax rate system, where commercial properties are taxed at a different level than residential. We, and our fellow tenants in the town, we think that if you did a cost analysis, a cost benefit analysis of the change, you would find that you've caused a large impact on the commercial and businesses in this town, and you've provided very little benefit to the residents. The changes are going to impact small businesses in this town that are all owned by residents. What you've done is, no one's bills are going down. Instead of a $200 increase for the average resident in this town, you're going to see a $160 increase, a $40 difference, on average. This shift is unfairly burdensome on commercial properties in this town. We're going to see, instead of a $1,000 average increase for the average commercial property, you're going to see a $5,000 increase, a difference of $4,000. That shift is going to fall on the backs of the small business owners, who are mostly Long Meadow residents. As a result, you could see the total tax base decrease over time, because businesses could, buildings could fetch less for rent, which would lower the property values, and you'd get less in total tax. Only large corporations are going to be able to shoulder this burden. The board has to remember that, on January 1st, minimum wage in the state of Massachusetts is going to $9 an hour, and later in the coming year, we're going to have this, the sick days vote that was passed go into effect. Those are two changes which are already happening, especially the minimum wage will have a huge impact on small business. The only companies that you're going to see that are going to be able to handle this change are large corporations. So this change is just another one that's going to be the straw that breaks the camel's back to allow more corporations, large companies, as opposed to small businesses, into the town of Long Meadow. Small businesses, again and again, are the ones who donate to things like Long Meadow High School, booster clubs, sports, different charity groups. The $4,000 from the average business that you've now taken, and that is going to come right out of that budget money, right? When the senior class play next year comes around, looking for play bill ads, that money's going to be not as freely available. When the wrestling team looks for donations to their booster club, the football team, the basketball team, those donations will be less available, because it is the small businesses who have decided to be citizens of the town themselves, because they are always donating, always trying to contribute. You are, the task, the tax classification hearing that you had December 1st, in my opinion, was poorly advertised. You had, then, myself and Twin Hills, very few people there to speak. You have a large number of tenants here tonight. I believe when the tax, when the actual real estate bills come, you'll have a flood of outrage over this change, and we don't, we're not sure if there's any room for change, but we just want to make sure that everyone on the board knows that we think this change, it doesn't make any sense, it doesn't benefit anyone, and it doesn't, you've not, you've not raised any additional funding for any, you've not given any additional services, and we think it is incredibly negative, and...
Thank you, Joseph. And Robert. Thank you both.
I think that sums it up, and thank you for your time.
Next person who'd like to speak?
Good evening. Bobby Barquette, 35 Plymouth Road, representing White Hot Kitchen at 791 Williams Street. Mr. Rinaldi did an excellent job in probably encapsulating what I've heard from the sentiment from the business community here in Long Meadow in the last two weeks. I think we're going to hear a lot more, probably, once everybody hits their tax bill. Having been in your seat in the past, and actually entertained this idea, we didn't think it was much sense then. It never got passed forward at that point in time. I guess my concern is, and I'd like an explanation from the board when it comes time for your comments, is to reach for the bare-bones minimum. Why did you go for the minimum? In other words, why'd you go for the minimum amount of input from the business community? You had an opportunity to have forums, reach out to the business community, collaborate with the business community, figure out what the business community actually does for this town, for all the different groups, Senior Center, Long Meadow Days, in addition to the schools, not just the schools, but all the other groups, Stroll for Strength, and all those other, all those other community efforts, and fundraising efforts, nonprofits, they all reach out to small business. They make, we all get it on a regular basis, especially this time of year, knocks on the door, "Can you contribute? Can you contribute?" Myself, having been a newer business community member here, tried to reach out as much as I possibly can, and I do that from a marketing effort, of course, but at the same time, reach out as a good community member and try to do that. I don't recall getting a postcard or a phone call from anybody saying, "Why don't you come in? Maybe there's a better way we can do this." I'd like to know, is 10% a statute? Is that a policy protocol? What did the board entertain for policies with regards to increase on the split tax rate? Did you entertain a half a percent, 1%, a multi-year plan? I'd be very interested to hear all that. I'd like to know if there's any way of reversing it. It's probably doubtful that that could happen at this point in time, and probably have to be addressed next year, but I would invite the board to actually reach out to residents, including the business community, and try to figure out a way to collaborate, work together with the community, in trying to figure out ways to take care of this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next.
I live at 925 Williams Street. The reason I'm here tonight is I've heard different stories about a new, another vote coming up on the shops, the expansion of them, changing the very, the zone for the shops. And what really concerns me is, I was at the last meeting, and we had a vote, and it was defeated. The plan was defeated. The next thing you know, we have a second vote, but somebody wasn't quite sure they got all the votes that they were there, and it got defeated again by a couple of additional votes. So now they've lost, and what I hear now is they're planning to come back in January to have another vote. Another vote that has already been defeated twice, and now they want another one. But where does it stop? To me, it sounds like Chicago politics, and that's nothing that we should be proud of in Long Meadow. I don't know what the final outcome was, whether they're going to have this meeting or what, but in addition, they've made it so that it's in a period of time when this many seniors, including myself, head to Florida for the winter. That's really not going to get a full representation of the character of Long Meadow. If you exclude, I don't know how, what the percentage is, but I'm sure it's a pretty big percentage, and I just think it's not a right way to do it. They'll just keep coming back until they get one that wins, and it just doesn't seem right to me. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else? Mr. Rinaldi? Which I would want.
Hi. James Thomas, representing Bottle Shop, live at 45 Prynwood Road in Long Meadow. I would like to, I would have liked to have heard some announcements, some information about the split tax. It was non-fortcoming. I think it would have been nice if the board had reached out to anybody in the business community. Business is tough. We're having a difficult year, it's a difficult economy, we've got two big issues coming up to us, and you've got, and the town throws a third one at us, kind of out of the blue. And I'm not sure that there is anything we can do about it at this point, but I would just like to, you know, voice my protest, I guess, in that, in the lack of acknowledgement of notification. That's all I have.
Thank you, James.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my name is Gerard Nollet, and I at 724 Frank Smith Road. And I'm a customer of most of the small businesses in Long Meadow. And I guess as a history lesson, I think this is probably one of the first times where we have voted a 10% increase on our customer base. Unlike what my friend Bobby Barquette, Bob Rinaldi, whom I visit constantly, frequently, are we trying to drive our small customer base out of town? I guess there was probably a reason, for many, many years, that we kept it at 1.0 tax rate, and the reason is simple. Why are we trying to drive our customer base out of town? Number one, and this certainly could. Number two, it is an infinesimal amount of revenue for each resident. To me, it means, to me, it means less than $1 a week in tax relief. It's inordinate. It is not complicated, and from the standpoint of, you know, as I say, relief, it's, it's not, the damage that's done, and there was a reason, again, why we kept this at a 1.0 tax rate. The dollar a week that's going to, that's going to come back to me is going to have to be passed on. Anyway, anybody that's in town trying to run a business, this is a cost factor to that small business, and it has to be compensated for. And who's going to pay the compensation? The customer. So from that standpoint, I think history will show, and I'm absolutely disappointed in the entire board, three of the members of the board, that voted for this increase. I don't think it's right, I don't think it's fair, and the amount of revenue return is so detrimental to our commercial base that you need to review it, and if, if at all possible, if it can be returned, you know, I guess you need to have a vote, I know what the Attorney General would say, it's gone to that, it's on that far, I understand that, but if at all possible, if this can be returned to the 1.0 rate, I would encourage you completely to do that in terms of fairness. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Michael Levitt. I live at 40 Barber Lane in Long Meadow. I own Kidley Winks here in town. And I'm concerned for many reasons about the differential in tax rates. As a resident, as much as, and I appreciate what Jerry said, and I agree with him, I'd like the dollar a week, it won't make that much of a difference, but on the other side, what it's going to cost me as a businessman is tremendous, the extra thousands of dollars a year. Raising prices aren't always the issue. We have much competition, not just with bricks and mortar stores, but internet stores, and these are little things that are fighting against us all along, and it's just making our expenses higher, plus the dollar an hour raise in minimum wage increase our costs exponentially. I think the other thing we have to look at, too, is when we moved to town 35 years ago, it was a nice little quaint town, with nice family-owned shops, and when Press Blake sold the property, Long Meadow Shops, the feeling was, we're going to continue this feeling. And the first thing that came in was big business. We had the big box stores. And again, it's taken away the flavor and the character of a Long Meadow. The increase in taxes is due to small businesses. It's not that you're inviting us to leave, but it's making it harder for us to be here. And who can afford the higher tax rates and the higher expenses? It's the big boxes. And I think it's affecting us two ways, as residents and as business owners who are part of this community, enjoy being a part of the community, enjoy contributing to the community, and it's becoming very, very much harder to do these days. So again, joining so many other people, I'd like to, if possible, to reconsider the change in tax rates, and make it an equitable agreement, an equitable arrangement for all members of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name's Dave Steinberg. I live on 31 Brookwood. I also own Semolina, and I'd like to speak to the tax, the commercial tax rate as well. I think that all of the people that went ahead of me spoke very well, and, you know, I really am just sort of reiterating some of the things they said, but the bottom line is, I'm a small guy, small business, you know, just like they are. You know, I live a fairly modest life, you know, I don't make a ton of money, it's a pretty small little shop, and, you know, the bottom line is that, you know, my question really to you guys is, when's this going to stop? You know? I mean, I understand that you're not, you know, we're in municipality, and, you know, the state's the state, but like they said, you know, we've got a minimum wage increase to consider. It's going to go up to $11 eventually, all right? I hire 16-year-old, 17-year-old kids, guys are going to be, they're going to be making $11. They're wet behind the ears. It's their first job. They've never worked before, you know? And this is what we're up against, all right? You know, first, we had, you know, we instituted a local tax, the local sales tax, added on a, you know, quarter of a percent, all right? My question is, is when's this going to stop? What are you going to squeeze the small business owner to the point of where we're done? I mean, I'm at the point right now where I'm like, is it really worth it for me to be in business? I've been in business now in town for quite a while, maybe not as long as some of the other guys, but still, I've been here for quite a while, and, you know, I'm sitting there scratching my head going, what am I doing? Why am I killing myself over this? For what? Doesn't make any sense, guys. I really, I just don't understand. The big guy, the big, you know, big box stores, you know, chains, whatever, they're going to survive, but really, the guys you're killing are the guys that are, you know, are just trying to make a living, just trying to make a buck. And, you know, we're really, we're just, we're up against a lot, and, you know, I really hope that you guys reconsider it, you know? Really, when I, I didn't even know what was happening until someone came into my shop and said, "Hey, you know, they're, they're changing the tax rate." It's like, no, no one's, don't told me anything, you know? Shame on me, because I don't really watch public access or come to these meetings very often. And I've got two young ones at home, so, you know, I really don't have a lot of opportunity to get here, but, you know, I'm really, really disappointed about the lack of information that was provided about this, and our lack of opportunity to speak on this before the action had actually moved forward. So I really ask you guys really to reconsider this, and also to answer, you know, when's this going to stop? When are we going to question, you know, when you're going to squeeze the small business guy to the point of where it's just not worth it to be in business anymore? So, thanks for your time.
Thanks, Dave. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Jim Malden, 36 Riverview Avenue, also representing the UPS store. All I can really do is reiterate what those that have spoken before me have said. The tax is going to be hurting all of us. We have, in our businesses, what they call triple nets, which basically means that the landlord pays nothing. Everything gets passed on to the shopkeeper. So we pay for their insurance, we pay for the maintenance on the buildings, and we pay their taxes, in addition to having to pay by the square foot for rent. Additional taxes like this, and there's no indication from the gist of the meeting two weeks ago, that this was going to be the end. The original comment, or the original proposal, I believe, was 50%, and it worked its way down to 10%. If this is just the beginning, then, as everybody else has indicated, you know, it's going to get passed on. It's going to roll downhill, it's going to be coming from you folks, to the owners of the buildings, to the shopkeepers, and the shopkeepers have no choice but to pass it on to the, to the buying public. No one here, there's no pot of gold here in Long Meadow for the shopkeepers. Many of them just scraping by, making a living, and something like this is only going to hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Hi. Bob McGoldrick, 99 Arlington Road. I am the big box representative here, okay? But that's, you know, Big Y will survive, trust me, they will do fine. My concern is for the small business person. I was that for 26 years before I joined Big Y. This came out of nowhere. Honestly, I got a phone call last night, yesterday afternoon, to find out that this 1% or 10% increase was coming along. I think what we're really looking at here is to make sure that people understand the process, you know? It just seems like one of these end-of-the-year sneaking stuff through, and let's just kind of go with it, and hopefully nobody shows up. So on behalf of the small business owners here, you know, they will have to pass those costs along, as Ted has been said, Jerry did a great job in explaining to it. Big Y will survive, you know? We're not going to change our prices, but please, please, think this thing through. The small business owners need to remain what they are, and if not, have a discussion about it. Let's talk about it and go from there next year, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll close down resident comments. So moving into Select Board. So move in select four comments.
There is a report in the packet for Quintetuck. And the question I have, I sent an email along to the town manager if there is a timeline that's going to be designed for whether we have implementation and then target date for a meeting in which the results will be announced and traffic studies and that type of thing. Is there, so the question is, is there one that we have on the table now or is it a process of being designed, timeline?
Do it inside or I can do it during the report?
Yeah, you, okay, if you does it during the report?
So there is a timeline, that's all I'm asking, there's a timeline?
Not specifically, not in addition to what's in the report.
Okay.
Okay. What do you want, Paul?
That's what I asked, if it was yes or no, so the answer's.
Yeah, it's in the report. It's, I guess you'll explain it when we get to the report. Any other comments? Yes, Mark?
Yeah, I just, I think we owe all these residents, who I appreciate coming out, and the small business owners, some comments. I'd like to just give them my perspective of, I guess, what happened, when it happened, how it happened, and whatever. This is my fifth or sixth tax classification hearing I've been at, and each one pretty much has gone the same way, that representative from the Chamber of Commerce shows up and maybe one business in town. The tax classification hearing is advertised. I apologize that not everybody read it, not every small business owner read it. We can't control what gets read, but we do make sure it gets advertised. It certainly got advertised to the level that the representative from the Chamber of Commerce was here and at least one business was here. And every year, there is a discussion and a debate over it. I've been here, as I said, I think six years doing this, and every year, the issue of a split tax rate has come up, at least that I've been here, and have never heard the level of discussion that I heard tonight, particularly the level of, why didn't you ask us? And the point is that, and I said this two weeks ago, you know, a public hearing is a public hearing. And I guess our mistake is that we didn't take a public hearing and call every single business owner in town. But we don't do that with any of the hearings. We don't, you know, it's not our responsibility necessarily to call every business in town to tell them what's going on here. So to the extent that people didn't hear about it, I'm sorry to hear that. It's not that nobody heard about it. It wasn't done in the darkness of a back room. It was done in an open, well-advertised hearing that was the tax classification hearing. And to the extent that it went differently from the way it did in prior years, I have no comment other than that, that's what happens at hearings and public hearings that go on. So to those of you who came out, I heard you. I hear what's going on. I very much appreciate you coming out here and speaking to us. We understand the impact that it has on businesses. But I will tell you that for everybody who spoke here, I got two emails from residents who said thank you for doing the other way. So there, you know, and that's a comment of, that the public needs to hear, that there are residents who say, gee, it's only X dollars, but it's X dollars in their pockets. So that it's not a, there are two sides to every issue. We did hear you. We plan on, I certainly plan on listening, probably doing things differently in the future. But I think it was important that you spoke, and I appreciate that.
Great.
I want to thank everyone for coming out also and voicing your concerns. There's two sides to every issue, and my side is that I don't think enough information went out to the public if there was going to be making this drastic a change. During, I've been on this board for, it's going on my fourth year, and this is the first time I had heard someone come out and actually seriously discuss increasing 50% and then even 10%. We are assessor. Strongly recommended we do not. We stay to the 1.0. And we didn't agree with that. And I think if there are members of this board who strongly felt about that, they should have had their opinion go out so that there could be a discussion among the community. And I don't think there was adequate discussion or information that this was going to go that way. I personally did not know it was going to happen either, and there was no discussion outside this board like we can't. But I think if there were people who had serious concerns about where we are going with it, there should have been some workup discussion, even at the hearing that we had had the week before or two weeks before. In regards to hearing from other people, I personally have not heard people saying, we really appreciate the $45 tax break. And that just might be me, and they're not sending me the emails. But I strongly believe that this was not the way Long Meadow should have gone. I think it is harmful for the tax base, and I don't see much encouragement. But if you saw that meeting, you knew where my position was. But I just wanted to emphasize, thank you for coming out. And unfortunately, I, my understanding of reading things, we're not looking at ability to make changes at this time. But your voices do need to be heard throughout the year and next year. And I think unfortunately, you're, this is a wake-up call that you're going to have to let the select board know throughout the year and during other times such as elections on what is really important for this community. So thank you for coming out.
I feel like to address the comments because I do appreciate people coming out and expressing it.
Mr. Chairman, we had to speak somewhat louder.
I'm sorry.
Our headphones in this room.
All right.
And we're barely able to hear you, Mr. Grant, Charlie Grant.
Thank you, sir. All right, I will speak up. I do want to thank everyone, as my colleagues did. I did vote for the split tax rate. And at the time that we discussed it, one of the rationales for me was the different methodology that is used in determining the valuation of residential properties and commercial properties. And I think it disadvantages people who are residents. That was one concern. To me, the 10% went some distance toward rectifying that imbalance that was in favor of commercial properties. I guess the other thing that I would also speak to in terms of the notice, as far as I know, there wasn't anything different about this notice, except that it was greater than the notice that we have for other issues. Because we had to have a specific posting of the fact that the hearing was going to take place a certain amount of time in advance. Other agenda items only come out a few days in advance. I believe the advance notice was 14 days in this case. So I guess I have trouble hearing that part of it, you know, in terms of, you know, Ms. Angelidi's suggestion that she was surprised. I mean, this was in our packet. And in fact, we knew weeks in advance this was going to occur, you know? And we got the same, I believe, 14-day notice as everybody else in the, in the town. And in fact, prior to the tax classification hearing, we had a presentation about a different issue, which was the possibility of a residential exemption, which was a question that I had raised last year. So I'm not sure where the process really broke down. I do understand the disappointment in the result. But I think on balance, it was the right decision.
Paul?
Thank you. I was the one who made the original motion. And my motion was absurd, obviously, but it was meant to be. And as I said, and I'll say to you guys that are here tonight, first of all, we advertise, as everybody said. I haven't heard one member of the board say, gee, you know, it would have been nice if we heard about notifying the business and engaging in discussion. We didn't say that about the residents. And that's disappointing because there's far more residents than there are small businesses in the town. And everybody who spoke tonight obviously is a resident. The purpose of why I made my motion, and I'll say it again, is because the board has not had a constraint on spending. And it was to offer homeowner property tax relief. I've heard you say 45 bucks, it doesn't matter. It does matter to some. Okay? And as Mr. Gold said, I've heard the thank yous as well. It's not, maybe not as overwhelming as this might be here tonight. But the purpose is simple, is that it was to offer homeowners property tax relief. I'm a small business owner that rents in Long Meadow. I understand the ramifications. If my rent goes up because of it, it's going to go up because of it. But it was meant to illustrate to the point, and in fact, it was meant to provide relief to homeowners. And I wish you guys come out at the time we talk about our budget. Because the budget is far more important than this is. Because if we have, if we actually stop spending the way we're spending, everybody will have tax relief. And this isn't an issue of just, you know, explain, and first of all, let me say, we can't talk amongst ourselves about what that is going to be before we come to the meeting. There was nobody here that I don't think had prepared to say, here's what we're going to do as we walk in. So when it was said that, you know, this actually was, as Mr. Grant said, two weeks earlier, there was a notice on television, we were talking about this abatement, this potential abatement, and that next week was going to be the, or the next meeting was the property tax meeting or the tax rate classification here. So you have a concern, and some of you have emailed me, and I have no problem discussing with you, but it was meant to offer property tax relief. We can disagree on what that means, but I know for some, it means a lot. And I understand where you're coming from. As I said, I rent in this town, and I'm going to probably pay for it. So that's why I voted for what I did. And this discussion goes on every year. And probably for eight of my nine last years on this board, there's always been a discussion about a potential split tax rate. This is not news. This is something that we've discussed every year. We discussed it last year. As a matter of fact, we had a vote that wasn't unanimous on a single tax rate. And again, I would urge you to come out during the budget process, too. At the spring, at the fall town meeting, we just spent, you know, record sums of money at a fall town meeting, and it was probably less attended than this was. So I'm just going to urge you, come out during the budget process and talk to us as well. It's not just during the tax classification here.
Any other comments? Okay, I guess I have a couple of comments. I did not support the tax increase. The records will show that. We all had our reasons. I went along with the assessor. I think 5% is business in our community, small, a lot of small businesses. It's been mentioned, there are some big box stores. But I didn't support it, just it didn't make sense to me. And I told, I spoke to one business owner, and I said, if one penny on you would have given me 15 pennies, that'd have been different. But it gave me less than about one-half of a percent, about $45 on an average home. That's the price of a cup of coffee once a month for the year. So I couldn't raise that occasion because I know the impact it will have on business. We have the charts in front of us. It was, it's a full 10%. We have been, there has been questions arise, does the select board have any options on this? And I called the state just for information, so I can inform the board if there is any options available. And I'm awaiting that call back. We've got two stories. One story says there's a possibility that the board could reconsider, and there's another story that says, no, once it hits the state and it's official, it's official for that year. It can't be brought back on the table till next year. I should have that word tomorrow. And that's just to brief the board, to let them know that there are, there may be an option. I personally don't think there is. I think, I think there's always exchange. If there'd been some problem with this meeting, if there was something wrong with the vote, something that caused us to have a revote, it would have been different. But I think it was pretty straightforward. It was a 3-2 vote. And so I would imagine that's what it will come out as. I also appreciate you all coming out. You brought up some good points. And I think, I think there was, I carry away from this one excellent point. Now, Paul said it was a ridiculous thing, 50%. He still made the motion. And at this meeting, if you watched it, there's a good likelihood that that motion would have been voted on. Because Mr. Gold put a 10% motion in, and he didn't get a second. And at that point, it looked like the room was a 3-2 vote. So I don't know what would have happened if that vote would have gone through, but it's a very likely story that we could have had a 50% tax increase voted in in our community without any notice. But I don't know what would have happened. I can't relive history, but I can tell you what happened. And I implore you to go ahead and watch the meeting. It's on YouTube. You can look at everything that took place, and you'll watch the way it came down. Other than that, I do appreciate you coming out. I think the exchange was good. I personally have taken everything you've said to heart, and I think some of the other members have taken it to heart. I think if we're going to propose something like this, I think it should, there should be, especially if it proposes something like 50%, I think there should be some advance notice. I think we even mentioned that that night we voted on. I said, I would like to know the impact on the actual business people. I'd like to hear somebody tell me what it actually is going to do. I personally am not a businessman, small businessman. I had forgot about some of the increases that you folks have mentioned that are hitting you this year in your small businesses. And the domino effects do build up. I said at the hearing, I said, I'm very much aware, I'm going to pay for this 10% increase because I frequent most every business in this room. So I'm going to pay for it. I realize I'm going to pay for it. But I have to accept that burden because that was what was ruled down. So again, I thank you folks for coming in. Anything else? Okay, we're going to town manager reports.
Thank you, Richard. Excuse me. You have my report and the reports of the departments in front of you. Paul, you had asked about Quintetuck Road. We've done some additional research. We've done some additional research on the Quintetuck Road issue. And as recommended by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission report, we did go, or representatives in Department of Public Works did go to the City of Holyoke to review their program. That information is in your packet. The short of it is that it really is not possible to install speed humps at this time of year. And so the timeline, like a specific timeline is really going to be dependent on, you know, when springtime comes. There's a report from Mike Rabel that details that information. We do recommend that the, in the interim, the board does consider looking at a policy in terms of a traffic calming policy similar to the City of Holyoke. We did receive our $850,000 upfront mitigation payment from MGM Springfield. I did include in the packet both our surrounding community agreement, that is essentially our contract, that was awarded us by the arbitration panel, that talks about how the funds, how the upfront funds must be spent, and then addresses the annual payments that will start when MGM opens its doors. And then I also included the original report, that was the independent peer review from the consulting company GPI that was done for Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that identified the specific areas of mitigation that should be done upfront. And those were the intersections of Long Meadow Street and Converse, Long Meadow Street and Forest Glen, and then Converse and Laurel. So to, now that we have the funds in hand, we'll be going through the process of identifying, retaining an engineer to help us do the design of these improvements. It's believed that the cost to do the needed improvements, these intersections, will exceed the $850,000. So after we get done some preliminary level of design, we will understand what those improvements will be and what the costs will approximately be. We will work at, we'll look at a financing plan to pay for those improvements. And if, you know, issuing debt, that would be offset by the annual payments from MGM would be one strategy. Obviously, the goal is to make the improvements that are needed before the casino opens and have it be as little impact to our budget as possible. Just the discussion on Bay Path pilot agreement that had been raised here before, it's just, I think, due to the holiday schedule on, at President Leary and other folks on Bay Path, and there really hasn't, we left it at some questions that we had about the agreement that were to be answered on Bay Path then. And I just, I think with the holidays and everything else, they haven't gotten back to us. So we expect to continue that discussion in the new year. We did receive a draft report from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission about the senior center site assessment, which was financed by a citizen petition at town meeting. The task force did meet to review that draft, and some significant revisions to the draft are going to be made based on the feedback from the task force. So we expect to have a final report in the coming weeks.
Sure. On the adult center site assessment study, you know, we heard about this draft report. I guess my question is, is there, is the task force doing something to report, to the report, to change it, to put it in final form?
The Pioneer Valley... The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, who's basically, is the consultant, had made, had done some of the site analysis, and made some recommendations that didn't take into consideration certain factors, like ownership of a site, or any kind of restrictions on, statutory restrictions, like if a site was a park, if it was a site that was a park, it's called Article 97 land, where you have to mitigate, or you know, you have to have an act of the legislature to build there, to build on it. What is it, Article 97 parkland? And because the approach originally was, look at the sites as if, just look at the best site based on its own merits, you know, and set aside information like ownership for the time being, just to see how the rankings come out. And when we looked at that, we then said, should we revise these findings based on our knowledge of, you know, ownership issues and ease of access, or ease of acquisition? And the task force did agree that that was probably wise. And so it changed what were the recommendations of the consultant, that feedback.
The other question I had, it went back to Quintetuck Road. And I read the couple of reports on the speed humps, and I understand the point about asphalt not being available at this time of year. This is one of the things that we had talked about in terms of paving. And I just, my question is, you know, speed humps is a, like the amount of asphalt, put down two or three speed humps, pretty small. I mean, is there no, I mean, is it literally, is there literally zero amount of asphalt available? You get my point?
I do get your point, and, I mean, sure, we could probably muster sufficient asphalt, but, you know, asphalt, it's, it's really, I think, I thought Mike laid it out in his report about the nature of the material, and heat, and how fast it cools plays into how you can form it and everything else. And doing it at this time of year, I mean, if you were paving a road where the asphalt's coming out of a heated machine and cooling quickly, that's, you could do that. But hand-forming a speed bump, or a speed hump, whatever you want to call it, with asphalt that's on the back of a dump truck, that's been cooling since it left the asphalt plant, I mean, it would, it would disintegrate after a few passes with the plow, and then you'd have scattered chunked asphalt all over the road, and I don't think anybody wants that either. We don't make it worse. And then the, we had since, we had gone up to Holyoke, they had gone to Holyoke, because these temporary ones, we had tested out, are, you know, six, I think he laid out, $6,000 or $7,000, and it's a, you know, it's a pretty labor-intensive install job, much greater than I anticipated. And they were, we were going to borrow them. And the reason why they're available to borrow was because Holyoke picks them up in November so they don't get destroyed by the plows. And when we saw that, this best practice model that was identified by PVPC doesn't put them on in the winter time, we thought, well, we don't want to, we don't want to do that, and end up owing Holyoke new speed humps, new temporary speed humps, and still have to possibly procure our own in the springtime. So it was, it was just one of those things. And, you know, we don't have these in town. And so we don't, you know, we don't have a lot of experience in building them, or installing temporary ones, so we wanted to make sure we did it right. And that's why we went to get the, do the additional research.
Can I answer a question for both of them as well? So the timeline is, it's not going to happen anything right now during the winter. At least, because you said, we got to wait till the asphalt plants reopen in springtime and do it. Have we thought about potentially putting stop signs on the street? If we're going to talk about traffic calming, and speed humps are one option, which is to slow cars down, have we thought about stop signs? I mean, are we going to wait till the springtime to look at that as well, or can those be put in just to, as a temporary, I mean, between now and then, I'm assuming we want to offer some sort of relief. And I would imagine that stop signs are a lot, a heck of a lot easier to put in than a speed hump.
We were following what the direction of the board was, which was for the speed humps. The Traffic Committee has not, to be honest with you, has not gotten back together to go over the PVPC report, largely due to conflicted staff availability. But we intend to do that as soon as possible, and review that information of what would be another next good step to possibly pursue as a recommendation. I mean, I think, the thing with traffic calming or traffic regulations is some level of consistency. And, you know, I think as the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission report lays out, they believe sometimes stop signs cause greater problems, because people accelerate faster coming out of a stop sign, and could increase speeds. So that was one of the reasons why we, I think all of you, were looking more towards the speed hump solution. But we will certainly go back to the drawing board. Like, as I mentioned, I do think, as I said when we presented the report two or weeks ago or more, the recommendation of doing a traffic calming policy and really covering all these things is a good one, and I wish, I wish that was the original recommendation that I had made. So I think, as I said, I would encourage the board to look into establishing a traffic calming policy based on the Holyoke model as was recommended, versus kind of going out on an ad hoc trial and error basis. And there's a couple of quick notes to let you know that, you know, that one of the teachers' contract with the school, with the school committee is up for renewal, and that's obviously a major factor in our budget discussions. And I just wanted to let you know that I had been engaged in some of the executive session discussions with the school committee. For the purposes of the contract, apparently the town manager is a voting member, and also is to sign the contract, so the school committee has been good about keeping me informed, and allowing me to, not allowing me, but I've been involved in the executive session. So I'm keeping an eye on that, because we already can look ahead and see that that's going to be a major factor in our budget preparation. Capital planning process is underway. We presented the information to the capital planning committee last week. They have started their review, they're going to meet in January to go through it. As well as the Community Preservation Act Committee has also received applications. And then finally, on the DPW facility, we'll be kind of doing some, doing some research on, and possibly some site visits on other new facilities to learn about best practices and get some ideas. And simultaneously, we will have to retain both an architect and an owners' project manager at this phase. So we will also, after the holidays, begin that process. Any other questions or comments on the report?
In regards to the MGM patient payments, and how you're looking to solve the problem but stay within the budget. As you said, it was really a percentage of what the costs were going to be to replace it. So I imagine it's going to cost more than the $850,000. I just want us to be careful that we look to solve the problem, no matter what the cost's going to be, bringing that back, rather than just stay within the parameters of the 850, because it's a problem that's existing now, and it's only going to get worse. So what will it take, is the question I'm going to ask, to really fix this, not only this year, but for the next 10, 15 years?
Yeah, I think you raise a good point. We're going to ferret some of that out with the engineer that we hire, to kind of go through and say, you know, what is the full measure? What are other alternatives we can employ? The $275,000 that we'll receive every year for about 13 years, because it's a 15-year agreement, but we won't see that money till, they're already two years into it. Because the agreement starts at the issuance of the license, which was a month ago. But we don't start collecting that money until they open their doors, which, you know, maybe 2016, a year or 2017. But probably, if the timing is right, we could issue debt and not have initial payments done until we start receiving that money, and use hopefully only a portion of that, because we do believe we'll have public safety costs that will also need to be offset. But that's the, that is the goal, is to come up with a plan that lays out all of our options.
Thank you.
Mark? Stephen, to that, to that, and, you know, wouldn't it be prudent to, to wait till we saw what intersections had the greatest impact, so that if we did have, and apparently we are going to have limited funds, we target the intersections that will have the greatest need, as opposed to spending now, trying to do them all, clearly overspending the money we're getting from MGM. And so I guess to that degree, it's almost, I guess I'm suggesting that we have what is called shovel-ready jobs at intersections, ready to go, when we start seeing where the impacts are, as opposed to saying we want to do, we'd like to do them all, but we just can't afford it.
Well, there is, under our agreement, we do have, like I said, those three intersections were focused in on by GPI initially, and that was consistent with what we knew, our town engineer and our departments knew, as well as what our consultants, Parsons Brinkerhoff during the mitigation process, as well as the Gaming Commission's own consultants. It was all, everyone kind of affirmed that those three intersections, based on the counts, were going to be the most impacted. And then we do have a look back, a one- and a five-year look back in our agreement with MGM. And those are for additional intersections. In fact, we're going to be having a neutral third-party traffic consultant continue to evaluate and monitor, like Shaker Road, you know, I think, and I don't know, they're in, they're somewhere in the GPI report, but you can see the primary upfront mitigation with those three intersections, and then monitoring and look back on several others. So that plan that you just talked about is kind of outlined in all the work we did last year, or earlier this year. But you're right, and that's where we want to make sure that we don't, you know, spend it all in one place, as it were. And, but we don't, we don't have a sense of that until we've gotten a little further down the road with our, you know, it may be that we have to, you know, move curb lines a little bit to improve flow, or, you know, widen intersections slightly, or something like that, in addition to upgrading the signal equipment. Or it just may be signal equipment, and until we get that, we won't know. But, yeah, your point is well-taken, and we are being mindful of making sure we get the most out of our mitigation payment.
Can we, or should we be assuring residents that appropriation of this money still does require a, currently a vote by the, by the town meeting? I mean, even though the money's coming in from MGM appropriating for projects, does require appropriation of the money?
Yeah, I would guess, yeah. The uses of it are governed by our, essentially our contract. And I'd want to check with town council, but you're right, we can't, the only town meeting can appropriate us. That's correct. The other thing I did want to mention is that I received in the mail, a invitation from the Gaming Commission, they're going to set up a community mitigation committee or task force, and the town has to designate someone by January 15. So at the next select board meeting, I would ask the chair to put consideration of that on the agenda.
Is it going to involve any trips to the Bahamas or anything?
I certainly hope so.
Certainly hope so.
Okay, I have one question. On the, well, not a question, more of a statement. But Stephen and I have had a lot of conversations on Quintetuck Road, all the laws and stuff that surround this action, and I think that's still just slightly up in the air, but it sounds like the Planning Committee or Planning Commission may take a much more active role in these requests than we had once thought. I think we're still hammering that down, but apparently there's a lot of authority given to the select board, and it's how do they get that authority? It looks like it comes through the planning board.
And town meeting.
And town meeting, right, and town meeting.
Town meeting, I believe.
Right, ends up with town meeting.
Has the ultimate, has the ultimate. And what we're talking about is, if I may.
Yeah.
The select board does enjoy fairly broad powers on modifying or altering roadways, but to abandon, or what they call discontinue right-of-way, requires a town meeting vote and a planning board hearing similar to a zone change.
Right.
It's not the same process, but similar. And you can, you can discontinue a roadway and not close it, and you can close a roadway and not discontinue it. I mean, closing a road is the physical act of putting up barriers, if you will, whereas discontinuing it is simply, on paper, the town giving up its rights to the right-of-way easement. And that can be petitioned by residents. And it doesn't have to be the whole road, they can petition only for a segment. And typically, once the right-of-way is discontinued, and I'd have to double-check on this subdivision, but in most places, the easement, we have the right-of-way by virtue of an easement, and so the land, the underlying, you know, fee interest in the land would revert back to the owners on either side of the center line. And then if we discontinue the right-of-way, those owners could then do whatever they want with it. So that process is out there as kind of a, which, and we were aware of, like I think I mentioned last time, which is why we wanted to kind of try this on a trial basis before the, you know, the ability to do that was, was given to directly just the planning board and town meeting. But that, we are, we have been talking to our land use attorney and making sure we understand that process.
I think it's best to say it's somewhat more problematic, or, I don't know what the best word is. I mean, I've read, it's doggone me, MGLs, they all call over each other. I mean, it's amazing when you get into them to figure out exactly what does apply to Long Metal, so.
We're talking to our, when you're talking to your attorney, and he says, and you think you're asking a simple question, and he says, well, this right doesn't come up all that often. That's usually a bad sign.
Usually a bad sign. They're somewhat convoluted, so, but anyway.
Thank you, Stephen. If you don't mind, I'm going to, I'm going to skip by the approval of the minutes, and I'm going to get down to the Long Metal Shops, and they get that one out of the way. And then I'd like to go ahead and do the Long Metal Shops, and then slip into Even News Business and set that special town meeting date together. So Long Metal Shop petition, presentation?
They don't need to make a presentation.
Don't need to make a presentation? You're here?
I understand it.
Is there any questions that the board would like to make?
What's the petition?
It's part of the process, is, and Stephen, you're up to speed on the whole thing? You've talked to all the lawyers.
We had, and basically, when they came last time, they made their presentation to the board, and the board referred it to the planning board, as is, as we had that discussion about, the board shall, you know, extend to the planning board. That process, what we learned in this research in the special town meeting, that process needs to happen again. The planning board has already scheduled its public hearing. So this is, we talked about the ministerial action of the board, you know, accepting the petition of you, which would be the same presentation you heard some months ago, and just referring the matter to the planning board. But we were told that a, we were advised by town council that they don't need to submit any new documentation, it's basically just a revote for process purposes.
So I guess, does any of the board have questions?
So this is just a motion to refer the petition to?
Yeah, and I don't even, we voted on it before, and I don't even think it takes a motion, it's just an automatic pass through.
It's not a motion, though. I would think you have to, you need to make a motion to refer the petition to the planning board.
Okay, we'll make.
I mean, that process has to take place.
I move to refer the petition to the planning board.
Okay, you have a second?
I'm going to say it.
Okay. Discussion? See, a new discussion, all in favor of pushing it on to the planning board? All opposed? Okay.
Three to one.
Three to, Paul, two vote?
No, I, you know, it's interesting, because I know it's on the agenda, but there is no information here whatsoever. And I know this is, you know, shops petition, and I'm not going to vote on anything that I don't have as a record in my, in my packet.
So it's three?
I'm just saying it.
To one? To one?
One abstention, one negative, and three in favor. Okay, planning board has set their date as January 7th, I believe?
That's correct.
I just have a question about that. I appreciate them getting out ahead of the curve, but I think that's the cart before the horse in terms of, my understanding, and we don't have our town council here, but, you know, and one of the reasons that we're doing this is that there must be a public hearing within a certain number of days prior to the town meeting.
That's way in advance of the town meeting, though.
Well, we haven't set the town meeting.
No, I mean, the next annual town meeting.
There must be a public hearing on a zoning change within a certain number of days of the town meeting at which this will be discussed. Okay? So what I was told by the Attorney General's office was that the reason we have to refer this back to the Planning Commission is that it's now been greater than that period of time, and I don't know if it's 30 days, 60 days, or 90 days, since they last met.
Right.
My point being that they set a date for their, their hearing, not knowing that it's going to meet that statutory requirement, because we haven't set the date of the town meeting, the special town meeting yet. And I don't understand how they And I don't understand how they, I mean, if we set the special, the date of the special town meeting of March 15th, and that's greater than 60 days away from January 2nd, 7th, and the statutory requirement is 60 days, it's not a legal town meeting. And I'm not saying we're setting it for March 15th, all I'm saying is that I'm not sure how they did what they did, when we haven't acted yet. And Stephen, I know that that timeframe, I don't remember what the timeframe is, I don't have my notes.
I believe it's 65 days.
But I think it's, if it's within 65 days of the annual town meeting, you can push it to the annual town meeting. I don't think it's, the only timeline that applies, that I believe is applicable here is the 14-day minimum.
Well, I think somebody needs to check that, and I say that because, and I'm not, because if that was the case, why are we holding another planning committee public forum? And the reason, and I'll tell you the reason, is what they told us, because the timeframe of the, if you will, the effectiveness of the last public forum has expired.
Right.
They need another one.
Right.
And they need another one, and it can't expire again before we have the special town meeting.
Right.
Well, we haven't set the special town meeting.
Well, we're going to set it tonight.
But what I'm saying is, they're, by them setting it January...
They haven't held the meeting yet, Mark, they can change it.
And my point exactly.
They can change it to anything, we're going to set the meeting tonight.
Fine.
I'll be honest with you, I was...
That was my point.
I was surprised that they scheduled the public hearing already as well.
They can't...
I think they were meeting, they may have just been discussing it, but the bottom line is, they're going to have a public hearing on it.
Correct.
If they need to, if they need to adjust the date based on the action taken on setting the date, special time meeting, then they'll, then they'll do that. But I, we did go through these timelines with town council, and I do believe that the only timeline is the 65, if it's within 65 days of a town meeting, which doesn't really apply, I mean, that's pretty far out. But we can double-check, but I think we need to set the date and go from there. Because you're right, everything is triggered by whatever date this board decides.
That's, that was my...
Well, not everything is triggered by this, because there can be a citizen petition come forth to hold a special town meeting.
Technically true, yes.
In our process, we're going to do it, but there are other processes. And we, when we were looking at the dates, everybody got a copy of what the school sent, and they were available in the different times, so they get very busy over there. So we did, we did vote to push on, push on the thing to, to, onto the planning board. The next issue is, are we, are we ready to set our annual town meeting, or the special town meeting?
What were the dates that you found that are available?
The first date available is January 17th, and then it's January 28th, and then it's February 3rd, and the, the other dates that they listed apparently are really going to require some significant shifting. But that was the three dates that they recommended, so the first date coming up would be January 17th.
The first Tuesday, for what it's worth, is February 3rd.
What is the 17th, Stephen?
Seventeenth is a Saturday.
Saturday, okay. And there's nothing that says you can't hold on Saturday, you just have to hold it, you can't hold before 6:30 in the evening.
I thought there was something on the, I think on a special town meeting, it's...
You're right. Bylaw's only 6:30 in the evening.
Yeah, it's only around 6:30 in the meeting, but, yeah.
I don't know why they picked 6:30, but they picked 6:30.
Yeah.
So that's up to the board. We have the 1/17, 1/28, and 2/3 are three of the dates that look like the facilities be open, and I believe our moderator has said that we cannot have the meeting in the auditorium, we must have it in the gym because of the capacity.
And these are the dates available, the auditorium, the gym?
Gymnasium, right, gymnasium.
I don't have a preference, as I stated, I'm not going to be in town on the 28th or the 3rd, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'm not going to be in town some of those times either, and other people are, you know, and we've heard from several people that a lot of people aren't in town during the winter.
Well, we've heard some people say they aren't in town, and I, we have, what, a whole, we usually have 1% to 1.5% of our registered voters who show up at our meetings. And I think this last meeting, we had, what was it, 400 and some voters?
465.
465 out of over 11,000 registered voters show up for the meeting. Then a typical fall meeting, there's only a half a percent shows up, so.
I guess I'll just start moving.
Start as a motion.
I'll start, move to schedule the special town meeting for January 17th.
Is there a second?
Okay, I move to...
Second.
Oh, okay.
We'll get these things voted down, if we're going to vote them down, let's, let's get through the process, non-seconding's not going to accomplish anything.
So the 17th was seconded?
Yeah, 17th was seconded. Is there any discussion on the 17th? Go ahead, Mark.
My personal opinion is that Saturdays are, you know, have a lot of advantages in some ways, but I think they have a lot of disadvantages in other ways, especially in the wintertime, when people are going to go, I mean, already people may be out of town for the winter, but weekends where people may go skiing and go away, I think a Saturday evening, I mean, you know, would be not, not as desirable. Clearly, it has some advantages for people who are working, but I don't think we've, I can recall us holding a town meeting on a, on a Saturday evening, and I think it would be a mistake to do that. I'd much rather see us holding on a Tuesday night, the 3rd of February, but my personal opinion.
Okay, any more, any more comments? Alex?
I guess I would make two points about the 17th, it's actually part of a three-day weekend, a lot of people go out, that's Martin Luther King Weekend. And then, I guess the other issue, which I think will apply to these other dates as well, is that there are a significant number of seniors who are out of town during the winter. I think, with, you know, if, if the idea behind doing this is to somehow empower voters, and I, and I won't repeat what I said before, which I believe that we're also taking away the votes of people who've already voted, but to set it at a time when we know a lot of people aren't going to be around, is not a good idea. I don't know what the great rush is, I don't, I don't, I've yet to hear that argument, so I'm not going to be in favor of something as, as soon as that.
Okay, fine. The, any more comments? Yeah, I guess I can't go without making a comment. I don't know what time of the year you'd have a town meeting, that somebody's not going to be out of this town. It's in the middle of the summer, they're down at the beach. Right now, we picked on this, people going to Florida in the winter, and they're not going to be here. I don't know if the people who are in Florida are the ones that vote at the meeting, I have no idea of that. And I have no evidence that the people are even going to be in Florida that would normally be at this meeting, so we're going back to the premise of what we've been informed as a board, we set the meeting, and now we're in the process of setting the date, but I'm not going to allow external factors to influence my decision, because they're not proven. I have no evidence that whoever's going to be at this meeting is going to be in Florida. We know we can't have absentias in voting, because there could be an amendment placed on the floor to change, change the whole thing, so, you know, we have to have a town meeting. I say we give it a whatever date that's applicable, and let's roll with it. But to hold off and wait for any certain date, I just, I don't see the merits on it. Yes, Marie?
Yeah, I think if the board was really concerned about the people leaving in February and January, we could have moved along quicker and had this done this, this month in December. But we decided to hold this off and pick the date today, so I personally agree that it's a three-day weekend, we probably should move off three-day weekends, so I'm not going to support the 17th.
Okay, you want to withdraw your motion?
I was just going through the dates, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll withdraw second, so that's withdrawn. Okay, move on to, do you have a motion for the January 28th?
What day of the week is that?
I think it's a Wednesday.
Well, why don't we, I'll move, February 3rd.
Okay. Second on the February 3rd motion?
Same, for discussion.
Okay, second for discussion by Mr. Santino. Discussion?
Again, there is, like you said, there's no good date, there's no perfect date, there's no date near to everybody, everybody will be able to participate, so, you know, I don't, I just don't know a good date, so.
Well, could I?
Sure, we're in comments.
I'm sorry?
We're in comments, go ahead.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess one thing, we traditionally have our annual town meeting in May, that, I mean, I guess the thing is, I mean, we're kind of blinding ourselves to the obvious, which is that there's a significant portion of our population that's away during the winter. There's also a significant portion of the population that goes during the summer, I think that's the reason why we never have town meetings during the summer. So, I mean, this is not, you know, that mysterious, you know, the point that you're never going to have a date for every one shouldn't stop us from trying to set it at the date that's most convenient. And I think clearly, something in February and April, I'm sorry, January and February are not going to be very convenient.
Okay, Marie?
I don't think January, February, March, April, people take their vacations at different times, and we're, if we go much farther into February, we're going to start to hit, is that winter break with the kids? And so, whether it's going to be February 3rd, or it's going to be April 3rd, or March 3rd, I don't think it really matters, and I think we should get this moving and taken care of as soon as possible. People want to come out, they want to vote, and the more we drag this out, I don't think it's a good idea. I think we should timely do this, I wish we had done it in December, instead, we've pulled this out until January, February, and I don't think there's any good excuse to push it out more months than that.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Maria, I'm not sure we could have done it in December, given the time, timing, having talked to our town council and the Attorney Generals, based on the need to post and have town, public hearings, and have the Planning Commission have to come here and there, we'd have had it Christmas Eve, if we were going to do it in December. So, you know, to say we should have done it in December, I don't think was, was a, was a practical, or even a possible, possibility, given the statutory requirements, we are talking about a zoning bylaw change which requires notice going forward. I think that, you know, moving it into February clearly is, is, in my opinion, pretty good. I'm personally, I'd rather see this done at the spring town meeting, when we know we've got a full attendance, people are scheduled to, to be here, and it doesn't disenfranchise the most number of people. I guess the question is, you know, if, if we're doing this again, why are we, why do we feel the need to do this, you know, tomorrow, as opposed to doing it when we get, get the most people who were in the room the first time a chance to be back in the room the second time?
I guess the primary answer is, because we voted to have a special town meeting, and we're setting it up. We voted as a board, based on the information that was presented to us, so I don't want to go back and rehash that, we've already had that decision being made.
Well, I don't, no, that, that, we voted to have a special, we voted to re, send this back to the Planning Commission to have another vote on it.
No.
Okay.
We voted to have a special town meeting.
This is just setting the date?
Yeah, this is just setting the date. The planning board's a separate issue. Okay, Paul, go ahead.
You folks are here, right, from the shops? Is that, okay, so, I just want to ask you, the obvious is, you don't want to wait till the spring town meeting, correct?
No.
Okay, I just, because that hasn't been brought up, that you've been asked about that, or whatever. There is no good date. If we're going to, if we're not, the board's not going to vote to have it at the spring town meeting, and obviously, there could be a citizen's petition between now and then to call for a special town meeting, and the board already voted for it. You know, I'm going to support the February 3rd meeting, because I don't think there's a good day, bad day issue. To you folks, the issue that I had at the time when you guys came for your, your proposal was, I had asked for you to come back and show us the revamped thing, and we'd never had that opportunity to see what you've done with it, and I would suggest that, I know you didn't make a presentation tonight, I would suggest that you do before February 3rd, because I think it would be helpful for the, because obviously, you see people do come out at certain issues when they're a little hot button, it might be some good opportunity to ask some questions of you folks about the parking and things like that that I have.
You're asking for this, please?
Yeah, I'm asking, I'm asking, you know, but anyway, I would support the February 3rd meeting, because I don't, I think between now and May, you're not going to find a date, you know? I mean, we can go back and forth in schedules and, you know, whatever, I mean, everybody's busy. The only thing I don't like is a Saturday date, I mean, I want to, I don't, I think the Tuesday night, we traditionally had meetings on Tuesdays, and I think if you keep them on Tuesdays, that's a little bit safer than, because the public's used to that over the years.
Marie?
Actually, can I, I'm not sure if I need to amend it, but it would be nice, let's say if we pick the 3rd, or any date we do pick, that we have a snow day of the 4th or something. So if it is a snow day, and we have, or a weather day, we have another day we automatically roll to.
How do you notify? Wow.
Well, I loved your little robo, yeah, wasn't a robo-call.
That makes one.
One person I liked it.
It's permeable, yeah. I thought it was a good message.
I don't know what, well, it probably's never come up, but you make a good point. Pro, I mean, that's tough, because I, these things really should be, I mean, it should be probably rain or shine, because of the logistics of the gym and setting up and...
I think that your bigger issue is going to be, is trying to reserve that for two nights, for example, and making sure, you know, you just had a list of availability.
Very narrow list.
Right.
Yeah, they're very narrow.
I think if we come to that road, we're going to have to, and it does do that, I don't...
Yeah, if it looks like the Great Nor'easter of 2015 is bearing down a few days in advance, the select board could call a meeting and...
And do what? I don't think we have the authority to cancel a town meeting.
I don't know.
Sure you don't. You do? I don't know, something's been posted, I don't want to worry about it, Paul, but I don't think we can.
Just wanted to make sure.
No, it's a good point.
It's a good point. I guess what I would advise is, let's, I would, I guess I'd recommend, set the date, and then get further guidance from town council or the Attorney General about what to do for snow days.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I guess I'd like to address one point, because we brought up, somebody brought up the call, I guess one of the things I was kind of surprised at when I read the Long Metal News was that Mr. Crane had indicated that he expected the new town meeting to be in January, which was news to me, since I was, somebody was going to be voting on that date, and you were not, which was even more baffling. And I guess, I just, I don't know what purpose there would be of the town manager attempting to speak for the board before the board has spoken. I don't get that.
I can answer that, if you'd like.
Okay.
It was really to clarify that the special town meeting wasn't tonight, which was the overwhelming feedback we were getting from people. We, I mean, and the reason why I did the call, which I was highly reluctant to do, was because I kept hearing from other department heads, the library, the council on aging, you know, town, parks and recti, oh, town offices were getting many phone calls, the clerk's office, people, with people suggesting, what time is that town meeting on the 15th? And so I, you know, I don't know that many people in town, but the people I do know, who I interacted with over the last couple of weeks, I asked them, have you heard this, and is there confusion? And they all testified that...
That was published in the Long Metal News, that it was.
It was published in the Long Metal News, and so that was, that was, created some confusion, honestly, and every resident that I asked had thought that it was on the 15th, and I said, do you think I should send out one of those calls? Because I don't personally like doing them, and I know people don't like, many people don't like getting them. And the level of confusion was such that everyone I spoke with encouraged me to clarify it, because people were confused on that. And I think you're right in that I proffered a possible timeframe that the board had not decided, and that was an error, but it was to dispel the notion that it was going to be tonight, is really, was the, was the point. So I apologize for that.
And you, you know you can't re, believe everything you read in the press.
What?
That was, that was a conclusion that we would likely be in January sometime. As I say, we're closed, we're, it looks like we're getting ready to vote on February 3rd. Any other discussion on the issue? All in favor of having our special town meeting on February 3rd? Raise your hand. All opposed? Okay. Yep. Yep. And, Paul, you had, you had made a mention, and we might as well clear that right now. You'd said, would you like to see them come back before the board and show us the finished plan?
Yeah, that was my request originally.
Glad to know.
To have you guys come back.
Yeah, reach out to me, and we'll get a date, huh?
I'm sorry, because I'm just making a note here about the, the special time meeting.
Right.
It says no, on the chart, on the bylaws, it's no earlier than 6:30.
Right, no earlier than 6:30.
Do you want to make the meeting at 6:30, or keep it at 7?
I would just suggest 7. We have, every time, I mean, I just, we vary from that.
Yeah, why don't you reach out, and we'll see our, our agenda, it'll be in January, because that's our next meeting. And we can get before the board. And you have that traffic plan up, and that, that will also, we'll have the cameras, so the general, the general public will be able to see that, too. Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Paul?
No.
Richard?
Yes?
Before we leave this, I just want to clear something up.
Sure.
I was a little disturbed, Alex, when you wrote that article in the paper, that I think said some things that I don't think follow the facts that we got on the outline, especially from Kathy Ingram. And one of the things, what worries me is that when you write the letters, it's to inform people and to express your opinion. But when you do that, it's really important that you get the facts straight. And when you said that there was, there was no concerns actually said during that night, and it was, all happened later. And we had this timeline that made it very clear that the night of the town meeting, during the vote, people were coming forward, and the counter was even that same night. So it wasn't really a delayed issue. And I think it's important for people to realize that, that this timeline did exist, and that Kathy Ingram very carefully said. And I remember hearing during the actual voting, there's a problem, there's a problem. And so that wasn't something that people decided later after the vote had occurred, oh, that this, and the, and the shop vote did not go through, that there was a problem. But it was actually occurring during the counting of the vote, even before we heard the final results and who it was coming. And the reason I think it's important for us to state that here is, and examples, when the resident comes and feels that there was, it almost sounded like something nefarious, that we're going back to get the correct vote, and it's Chicago politics, when actually, it was very thoughtful in understanding there was a problem contemporaneously, it was discussion during it, discussion after it. Would we have preferred that the whole thing stopped immediately, and we, we make a decision then? That's something the town moderator had to decide. People were leaving, right after voting, they had walked out before the even results had been stated. So I think it's really important that people realize that this was very thoughtfully looked at by people at the town meeting, and there was a lot of serious discussion afterward. And this board deliberated on what was the right thing, and we're really trying to do the right thing in getting everyone's voice heard. And it's not going to be easy process. And it's not going to be easy, because some people that could not come to the town meeting will come this time, and the second town meeting on the February 3rd, some of the people who had voted either yes or no will now be able to have their voices heard. But we are just trying to do the best we can. And when we had the threshold hit of two counters coming and saying, not everyone's vote was counted, and there is a problem, I, I think that it's very important that it, the town realizes that we have really thoughtfully looked at this. And it has not been an easy decision and process going forward. So I want to thank everyone for working through this, but realize, and I don't want to have to publish Kathy Ingram's timeline, which I thought was a lot of work put into it, and showing from the very beginning there was a problem. So next time, I know we don't write articles together, but I just want at some point in time to be able to say that there, I think, a different set of layout of what happened that night. And that's all, Richard, I wanted to point that out.
I have one comment about the town meeting, and I'm just going to, I'll disagree a little bit, and I'm not going to get into everything, because I, if something were happening that night, I'm really torqued off then, and nothing was stopped. I mean, that's if, if, I don't want to go there. My question I have is, I would hope that if we're going to have a special town meeting at a cost to the taxpayers, if we're going to do a hand count on a vote, that we actually train the hand counters. Because this is a cost to the taxpayer for whatever reason, and since no one is accepting responsibility, or, I just would hope, and I'm going to ask, that the people that are going to be counted be trained in what they do. And I, I just don't want to see this again, because I, I don't agree with this timeline that we all knew about it the night before, because we did it. And I just, I, my only comment is, I don't want to see it happen again, because we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be forced into this position because of something that happens during a meeting that we don't control.
Val? I mean, Maria, I guess I'm a little at a loss to see where, factually incorrect, the statement you just made, that two counters came forward and said, not everyone's vote was counted. Those words are not literally on either of those letters. So I'm not really sure where you're getting that. I, I think your interpretation of the documents that we were presented differ from mine. The letter that we received from one hand counter talked about possibility, not, certainly not, not everyone's vote was counted. The other hand counter, as I stated in my piece, left questions open. And I, I'm still sort of dumbfounded by, if something is serious as what we're hearing about now, because clearly, none of that was brought to our attention during the meeting. And if it were, it was beyond our power to change the meeting, it was not our meeting. If something were that serious, and I'm presuming that everybody who was working at the meeting was acting in good faith, was intelligent, and trying to do the best they could. If, to me, the fact that somebody didn't stop the meeting, or they didn't try to huddle up to try to address the problem, that absence tells me something. It's sort of like what Sherlock Holmes talks about, the dog that didn't bark. So the, the fact that that didn't happen tells me something. But the reality is, there's a lot of questions that we're never going to get the answer to, and we're going to have to move on, you know, on that basis.
And that's what we're going to do, is move on. Let's see. When we get these board and committee vacancies done, we had, I think everybody got in their packet, we had the one gentleman that was not a registered voter, so we had to drop, drop his name, so we have two for the cable advisory.
I'll move, we appoint Paul Gorman and Dave Bartlett as associate non-voting members of the cable advisory committee, with terms expiring June 30th, 2015.
Second. Okay, second, and any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. All right, that's all the committee assignments we had. So let me click, click off here.
The other one?
Yes.
Yeah, they were put in together.
Okay.
Okay, let's go back and pick up the minutes, the old, under old business, the approval of the minutes from September 2nd, 2000. Do you want to do these one at a time, folks, or you want to go through them physical out?
I would prefer to do them en masse.
En masse?
Here's my question, are we doing the original motion?
I think that, I think that will come out in the motion.
And then, as amended?
Well, let's see. These are, these were, everyone's aware that Mark made a lot of corrections, and we were, the corrections were made, and everybody saw them last time, we've had another week to look at them. So I guess the motion will be to accept the minutes as corrected by Mark, or an amendment thereof.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for September 2nd, 2014, September 15th, 2014, September 22nd, 2014, October 6th, 2014, October 15th, 2014, October 20th, 2014, October 21st, 2014, November 3rd, 2014, November 17th, 2014, November 24th, 2014, as amended by Mr. Gold in our packet. Second?
There's one problem, I didn't amend the November 17th or the 2014.
Okay, then, I'll, then my motion is, all the ones that I said, except those two as amended by Mr. Gold.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, what about the November 17th? Accept the motion to approve this November 17th?
Oh, I move to approve November 17th and November 24th.
Okay, do we have a second?
I, I'll second him for the purposes of discussion, but I have, I have some corrections I'd like to propose to the 24th.
Okay.
The 17th, I, I'm fine with, as proposed.
So should we just vote on the 17th?
You want to just vote on the 17th separately?
Sure, vote on the 17th.
I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but.
Any opposition vote on the 17th separately? Seeing none? All in favor of the minutes on 17th? Aye. All opposed? One phone is okay. Now we get to 24th.
I'm up for the changes.
Okay, so, on September, excuse me, on November 24th, under residents' comments, first resident comment, Mr. Goodman, it said, there was a comment, the second sentence says, the select board had the responsibility that the democratic process, and I prefer that it say, it was his position that the select board had the responsibility to assure that the democratic process was upheld. I think it was an opinion he was stating, and I think it ought to be stated that way. Similarly, from Mr. Nollet's comments, the third sentence, where it says, the residents of the town have the right, I think it's, he noted his belief that the residents of the town have the right. Both of those, I think, ought to be expressed as opinions. Finally, under, I don't know about finally, but under, the, there's a select board discussion on the town moderator reports, there's a comment from Mr. Grant, that Mr. Grant felt the problem should have been brought to attention during, I think it's brought to the moderator's attention, I think is what you intended to say, Mr. Grant, or I think what you did say, it brought to the moderator's attention, I would suggest that towards the moderators be added to that sentence.
Town moderator?
Yeah, town moderator.
That's under the select board discussion, and those are my proposed.
Okay. Any, any comments on the modifications that Mr. Gold submitted? Ready, no comments, Maria?
I move to accept the amended.
Okay.
Second.
Twenty, yeah, 24th.
Any comments on the motion? All in favor of acceptance of the minutes? All opposed? Okay, minute's accepted.
For February 1st, I don't know if we want, want a motion, I have a.
Do we have those?
What? Not 1st, December 1st.
Did we get those?
No, we don't have them in the packet. They, I think they got a.
I got them in my packet.
Oh, they're not on the agenda.
They weren't on the agenda, but they're in the packet.
Not on the agenda. Shoot, they were in the packet, not on the agenda.
So I had some corrections, so you shouldn't send them to.
Sure, no, let's go with them.
For the next time. If they're not on the agenda, we're not going to hold out.
Well, I can add them to the agenda. If you got the, if you got it ready, is everybody in favor of voting on this, if the, if a motion is placed?
I didn't see them.
Nobody's going to look, Richard, I got a ton of things I put in here.
Postpone the next meeting. Postpone the next meeting. I don't want the barrage of emails. Okay, so that was, what, December 3rd, Mark?
December 1st.
December 1st. Okay, let's see, what have we got? Town manager's performance. Okay, got town manager's performance. Okay, I've got something, I'm going to read you all. And this is a reoccurring topic, it's come back up, I think we've got it listed under old business, since it's been kicking around for some time. It said, several months ago, after our first performance evaluation of our town manager, Paul Santinello recommended that we do a 30, 60, 90-day evaluation on our town manager, directed at improving performance. In reality, although this sounds good, it is hard to determine how to implement such a process, leave alone gauge its success because of the following. Well over 85% of what our town manager performs, and that's my guess of it, by the way, I don't have scientific evidence to back that up, of our town manager performs on a daily basis is invisible to the members of the select board. In reality, we tend to gauge his performance on program failures instead of success. This is highlighted in that we only talk about failures and, and items we feel need correction. In our system, one perceived failure tends to erase 10 attaboys. We talk about goals and performance measures, and yet the select board rejected suggestions made last year concerning specific goals attained or attached to the broad categories of the town manager's performance plan. This year, each member of the select board listed their top five, top five goals for our coming year. We then, as a group, prioritized this list. Subsequently, a list of goals was produced for not only our select board, but also for our town manager to work on as a group. When we talk about the town manager's performance, it should be noted that the select board isn't involved with the daily activities of that position. However, our town manager and select board members are held accountable by a host of regulations or requirements. Performance and outcomes of events hosted by our town manager are regulated or encouraged by the following. We have 37 mass general law statutes and a charter, which applies, an overriding thing. The selectman and the town manager's policies, we have 55 policies currently that provide guidance and supervision for activities. In our bylaws, we have 6 million articles, 41 chapters, and 342 directives that provide guidance for what, how we run the town, and what the procedures are for moving forward. Provisions other governments' financial officers' guidance on how to operate a town's financial system, there's GFoa, which is a, I didn't count the procedures in it, but they are numerous that set up guidelines on whether our town is successful in the implementation of that plan, which helps our bond rating, and overall settles on our government, the form of business that we do. You have the employment contracts, which is another tool of supervisory importance. You have performance management system, which is the performance standards that our town manager has. It has 10 main areas of performance and 50 grading elements within that performance. All of these, all of these provisions of performance are superimposed on our reoccurring duties by our town manager. Reoccurring duties of a town manager up above, beyond everything we've talked about, is to hold regular staff meetings with the general public, with his staff and the general public concerning daily town operations. Respond to external requests for information and participation in external meetings on town business. Deal with select board requests for information and briefings. Almost daily interaction with the various news organizations. So our evaluation of Stephen is based on our personal interaction with him during the year, which generally occurs at our meetings or with written communication between our offices. Gauging how many points of control there are on the town manager, my main evaluation tool is no surprises. In other words, I expect no surprises. If I receive no surprises, then there's a, I realize there's a phenomenal amount of stuff going on behind the scenes that's seamless in the execution and management of our community. In our community, at the end of the year, didn't have, at the end of a year, if we didn't have any of the following, I must assume a lot of good work is going on behind the scenes. If we didn't have a major employee injury during the year, if we didn't have a major employee incident with a motor vehicle, if we didn't have a lawsuit filed against the town for any variety of reasons, if we didn't have any negative articles placed in the press about our operations or our management, or even the select board operations in our community. If we didn't have formal inquiries from state on operational issues, in other words, coming in and investigating us for improprieties of something that our town is performing. If we didn't have a high turnover, it's a sign that morale is good and we're a fairly stable organization. Adjudication of formal Leo complaints or labor relation suits, if we didn't have any of them, it's an indication those programs are running fairly smooth. And no unfair labor actions or claims. I started meeting with Stephen weekly after assuming the role of chair. Our meetings have centered on the issues of performance and how to improve relationships with the select board. I feel confident that our meetings have yielded positive results with the reduced tension that I see at our meetings towards the town manager. It's my feeling, if my feelings are different from the rest of the board members, then perhaps board members can provide specific items in performance of our town manager where they would like to see improvements. Basically, what I'm saying, guys, is when I look at this whole puzzle, it's massive. There is so much that's superimposed on a town manager to function, and it seemed like our main obstacle was brought down to communication. That was the number one issue that was echoed. And Stephen and I have tried, sincerely tried to improve communication. I see evidence in improved communication reporting. I've seen it in the town manager's report tonight, a very thorough briefing. I have a listing here, in our pack, we had, I believe, 76 or 70, no, we have 17 pages of departmental briefing information that's provided to this board in written format of what the town, what all the town departments did last month. I'm not sure where you go. I'm not sure what degree that we need. I, I consistently felt, and it was. I consistently felt, and it was my beliefs when I had the evaluation with Stephen last year, that a lot of our things seemed to be personality-based, that we just didn't like the way we were talking back and forth, and it was not operational-type issues. I think we've seen, I have seen noticeable improvements in Mr. Crane's behavior towards this board, and I feel confident that they will increase. I've seen Mr. Crane reach out to this board and testify to this board that he wants to make this work. I'm not sure I have seen the same reaching out to Mr. Crane to make this work, but that's my personal opinion. You do have a different opinion when you work in the chair and you deal with the Town Manager every day. I will consent and lay that on the table. I think every person at this table that has ever worked in the chair position understands that's a true statement. Mr. Crane and I still daily talk about issues. It's recent, it's last week, I believe I presented you with a list of 10 items, 10 items that I said personally, these are things that I would look at, and they were interpersonal-type things. I didn't share it with the board, because these were, these were 10 things that I said, please absorb this, it's not official. Basically, it was a document, I said, I see these as roadblocks to some of our successes. And he will internalize it and come back and see if we can implement it, but I have to, I can give it back to the board. I mean, if we're not happy with what I've done on my venture with Mr. Crane, then you're going to have to give me some better guidance or figure a better way to get it done, because I thought I'd been doing a pretty fair job in meeting what the board wanted. But if I haven't, I'm open to suggestions or any path that the board would like to take to correct us. Now I turn it over to the board.
The only question I'm going to ask you is that there was a voted directive of the board on what to do, and if you were in your former job and you had a process that said, here's a 30, 60, 90-day review schedule that we're going to do, would you have handled it the same way? And the only thing I'll say, Rich, is that during this time, from the time the voted directive, where you said, "I'll work on a document, we'll get it going," you had not informed the board at all, other than what you just did here. And what I see is that in the whole process of using that review that we did, was that it was quantitative, is that it would take away emotions and things like that, so there wouldn't be, hopefully, biases there. And that's what I assumed we were getting all this time, but if that's how you would have handled it in a private-sector place, and that's the way you were going to handle it?
Well, Paul, I guess I can address your specific question. In a private-sector environment, I would be working with Stephen eight hours a day, 40 hours a week. I would observe all of the avenues of interaction that he has, not only with the public, but with the employees and with external, with the media, there would be a constant exposure. I, like you, I see Stephen every week for about two hours, and I have phone calls as needed during the week. I try not to take up time in his office, because I know, I've been down there, I know how busy, and you've been down there, we've all been down there, we know how busy the Town Manager's office can be. I think what we have is a very, very, very difficult task to say that, on the supervision aspect. What I tried to bring out tonight was, how many items of verification do we have to have for performance? I mean, this is, it's unbelievable, the amount of regulations and policies and bylaws and directives that a Town Manager and that we all apply to every day that we work in this community. And I don't, I don't know specifically, I can't tell you right now one area where Mr. Crane has totally failed this year. There's been some items that we didn't agree with, there's been some misjudgments, and I think there will be in the future. I think it's how we deal with the problems when they arise, when there's a misjudgment made. Mr. Crane has said three or four times in the last couple of weeks, you know, "If I had to do it over, I would not have done Quintetuck Road as I did it." So that basically is saying, "Look, board, I understand I did this wrong," and he's been doing a lot of research on the Mass. General Laws, he's been talking to our land use attorneys to make sure we get it right. There was no guidance manual on this, and I guess if you took and tried to be proactive to a cause, sometimes you get jumped in over your head, and you find out a little bit later that, boy, there was a lot more that I realized to that. I've been reading the Mass. General Laws, I mean, I can't believe the stuff out there on how these procedures go. There must be 15, 20, 30 spots within the laws that apply to Quintetuck Road, and I get so confused, I have to ask somebody, say, "Okay, explain to me why it's written this way." If you guys have been in the laws, Alex, you're a lawyer, Marie, you're a lawyer, you've been in these things, they are very convoluted, because number one, they're designed to, for five different forms of government within the Commonwealth. So the things, a lot of times you have to separate what doesn't apply to your particular form of government, to boil down to what is your guidance. And in that time, you're pretty well getting buried and confused on what is the proper. I think the main thing has still been communication. That's what Stephen and I have worked on, consistently worked on it. I don't think we've really worked, we've not worked on any performance-based issues, if I'm not mistaken. It has all been communication, and was the call right? Was the Select Board overruling, or were you pushing? We've been trying that balancing act to get equilibrium to where we all understood our proper role and functions. And I think there has been some, I think Mr. Crane has brought up this thing about policy direction. And I've read the Charter now several times, I've talked to a lot of people, and I finally do totally understand what he was saying, that we do supervise, but it is through the direct, it is through policy direction. And I don't think the board has grasped the opportunity to fulfill that role for policy administration. It's something we've never done. We can accomplish anything we want, we can basically give very, almost detailed information to our Town Manager if it's given to it as a policy expectation, and we haven't risen to that challenge, because we've never viewed it that way. And Mr. Gold, I chatted with you on the policy, the tools are there, it rests there, it's that we've never embraced that avenue of management. And honestly, I think it's the only thing that will work, is because we don't deal daily, eight hours a day, with any employee in here. We're very remote from this, so it seems like we have to deal through policy. And then if the policy fails, then there is a performance issue. If we set a policy up that something will be done, and it fails, then you actually have a performance area that has failed, but it's a policy deficiency. And that may actually remove us, I don't know if we've never removed the interpersonal relationships, that's going to be there at all times, and I think we've said time after time, there's not a person in this room that couldn't possibly improve our interpersonal relationships with each other. But that's another meeting in its entirety. So, as I say, I lay it over to the board. I've tried what I thought was best for this board, and was best for the Town Manager. And if I've not been successful, then somebody's going to have to give me the guidance, which direction you would like me to go. Or actually, if you're that unsuccessful, remove me from the chair and start over, and go forward. And, you know, I might not be the right person to lead this venture. I've tried, and if people think I've failed, then do like you would do anything else. Elections have results. Yes, Mark?
Richard, I appreciate your comments tonight, and I know your work, I know how much work it is to be Chair of this board, and I appreciate that. There are a couple of comments, though, I'd like to say, and I guess it's more in the area of moving the town forward and progression, and I'm clearly most interested in that. Early on, your comments were, you know, "If we don't hear about," you know, and you had a great list of people, "then things must be going well." But there's got to be room in the process for the Select Board as elected representatives of the people to help steer the ship and not just set the policy by which the ship is steered. And by that, I mean setting goals for the town for the year. And what I didn't hear in your list was moving things forward. How do we do the next, whatever the next important thing is for the town? Clearly, running this town is a large job, and I don't pretend to want to run this job, town from a day-to-day job, nor should the Select Board run the town from a day-to-day job. But at some point, there, I believe, is a process by which the Select Board helps set direction. I had thought that was, in prior years it had been, through a goal-setting process, where we jointly, with the Town Manager participating, set goals for the year for the Select Board, and use the goals document, if you will, to, as, to hold the Town Manager responsible for moving, making progress on those goals. And if you recall, many years ago, we set those goals into four or five different sections, and I remember there was one in financial, and there was one in communications, and there was another one in operations. And we looked at each of those, and we talked about the goals for those. The lack of having those goals for this current year, and the lack of our ability to adequately feed back to Town Man, to the Town Manager on the achievement against those goals, whether it's for this year or for prior years, I think is detrimental to our ability to help move the town forward. That's a very, very broad way of saying that, you know, where do we supervise the Town Manager? I don't think we supervise him on, "Stephen, here's the phone calls you got to make today." But I think it is on, you know, gee, every month we'd like to hear a report on what's going on with purchasing the streetlights, because we just talked about we want to purchase streetlights. And there ought to be some level of progress on a monthly basis. And we're not going to ask you for progress on a daily basis, but, you know, or whatever the issue is that we talked about it. And so, to my understanding, that's what's missing from your discussion, is that, that level of, it is, in my opinion, it's supervision, but it's clearly a cooperative feedback input based on setting goals and reviewing progress on goals, for how the Town Manager and his staff executes the goals, and how the Select Board continues to respond to things going on that, you know, when the year started, we didn't even know it was going to be a goal, but something came up, and we need to make it important, whether it's a casino coming to Springfield, or something else going on. And so, to that degree, I think we need to take another look at the process of the Town Manager's goals, which are part of the Select Board's goals, and how we set them so that at the end of the year, we all know whether we achieved what we were trying to achieve.
Okay, I hear what you're saying, Mark, and as I said, I mentioned when I was speaking that last year, the goals were rejected by the board. They were attached to the FY15 performance plan that Marie had presented, I think, and I don't, I was looking, searching for the document, I have it home on my desk. But there was four or five goals attached to every single performance element, and the board summarily just discharged it, they didn't want to talk about it. So I came back, and I said, "Okay, if we don't want to do that," and I understand all these other things are controlling the behavior anyway, and I think you understand, and everybody at this table understands this, how many control points there are on performance on a municipal official. We came back with us setting up on what we felt with the goals. What did we want? And that's why we made up the list of the 20 items that I, that we collectively felt were important. And we are now down to the third or fourth of them, and some of them we really completed below the line. Now, they were goals that fell back onto the Select, onto the Town Manager too, because we needed his help to implement some of this stuff. It's not just us, like, you know, we had a goal on DPW, well, now it's back in his camp to make it work, with the studies and all. So that's the element there that's supporting our goals. Now, if you want to set up separate goals strictly for the Town Manager, I would assume they're going to go back somehow related to the performance document, which was what Marie, what Marie brought forth. Somehow, they've got a, it should be tied into some kind of performance element, I would assume, I mean, that's usually how it goes back. So, you know, again, I ask, how many points of testing do we want? Where we feel comfortable, at what point do we feel comfortable that we're getting what we want in the community?
That's a question, my answer is, you know, the process is, there's two points, beginning of the year and the end of the year. But only, you know, people who were, you know, unreasonable would say, "Stephen, go away, don't talk to us, we'll talk to you again at the end of the year." Because things change, and you need to know how you're progressing. So I think you need to, you know, do check-ins throughout the year, or progress reports throughout the year on those goals, but again, and modify the endpoint if it's appropriate. But, you know, I haven't heard anybody say, "We shouldn't be setting those goals for, on a yearly basis, or a two-year basis, or whatever the basis is, that we want to achieve things for the town." And I will say parenthetically that, you know, similarly, you know, it concerns me when goals pop up that, whether through us or through Citizens Initiative, or things we didn't even know were going on, that seem to sidetrack what we're doing. And, you know, there's no consideration for, you know, a discussion over, and this is what I say with people at work, "I've only got so many resources, you know, I'm now working on Quintetuck." I didn't know, that wasn't on your list, folks, but let me tell you what's not getting done, because I'm working on Quintetuck. If that, if that in fact is the case, if that happened, we ought to hear, here's what's not getting done, because we're now working on Quintetuck, and maybe the board's going to say, "That's fine, but, you know, Quintetuck may be the citizens, important to the citizens of Quintetuck, but not enough so that it displaces whatever it seems to be displacing, or whatever the Town Manager is telling us would need to be displaced for it to occur." But those discussions aren't happening. What's happening is, Quintetuck's coming up, and we don't hear that it's displaced, so I assume nothing else has been displaced. And at the end of the year, I may or may not be disappointed that something else was displaced. And, you know, whether it's discussions with, you know, with the Long Meadow Shops, with Quintetuck Road, with what went on in Redfern, what, you know, on and on and on and on, we have these issues come up, and what I miss is the discussion over, you know, I need to respond to that, the town needs to respond to that, and therefore, because my assumption is that when we talk at the beginning of the year, we're loading up the Town Manager's plate. You know, he's got hundreds of town employees working within the town government that we hope to be working full-time to accomplish a whole bunch of things, you know? And so we load up, we load up the plate. When things come along and something's got to be dropped, that's the discussion that I wish was happening, that I don't hear is happening, but I know that's got to be going on. There's got to be something displaced with the amount of effort we've spent on some of these other items. So to me, that's part of the discussion, that's part of the ongoing discussion. You said, "How do you want this to happen?" And how many points? The issue is, as many points as it takes, so that we're kept up to date, that what we thought were important issues for the town, with the people elected us to make as important issues for the town, if they're getting deferred, we need to know about it. So that's my take on the answer.
Mary?
A suggestion, then, if I'm understanding you correctly, we're talking things like the traffic lights and the wireless Wi-Fi and things. So would it help if there was a monthly report on the goals that the board is reaching for? And I know this goal could be here.
Absolutely.
Now, but the issue then goes back to, does the board agree what those goals are? Because I sometimes hear us...
We only have to agree by the three to two vote, we don't have to agree five to nothing, and apparently, we did.
Well...
We set the goals.
I'm not sure if we, we might need to see that list again, because I'm not sure if we're all on the same page.
You can't see that.
I'm not sure if we're all on the same page, because what you think, the number one and two goal, I've heard discussion of other people saying, "No, the number two and three is else." So it'd be nice, maybe we should look, because we're trying to do measurables, and so maybe we need to reconstruct that list, and know that it's hard to measure someone other than he can report what's happened, but sometimes, let's say, the DPW complex, renovation or new complex, sometimes that doesn't move forward because of actions that occur outside his power. And so it could be something happens on the board, or something out of the town, but the only thing we could do is see the measurement of where we are in the next step and going forward. Would that help?
Clearly, I mean, one of the comments I was going to make toward the end of the meeting is, you know, we ought to be getting reports on the, and again, you know, we can go through this a thousand times, Marie, and, you know, what's the top priorities of the board, and you ask each one of us, but my sense is, and I think Richard said this when we originally did it, you know, we'll all have, you know, if you're top 10 and everybody's top 10, there'll be five things in common, they may not all be number one, but there'll be, you know, if nothing else, we'll just grab those five things that everybody has in common in their top 10, and let's move forward on them. I mean, my sense is that, you know, that we need to do that. Similarly, I think when you, you know, the example you used, you know, things may be outs beyond the control of the Town Manager. Report that, because sometimes then, that's where the Select Board comes back and says, and I'll take, for example, you know... and for, I'll take, for example, you know, the, the discussion over the buying the streetlights. You know, at one point, there was a comment that says, well, Miko has now revalued all of their streetlights, or because of the storm of October 2011, there's all these new streetlights in there. They put a much, much higher value on it. What is the town, you know, and therefore, we're not making any progress. Maybe it's the sense of the board, and I don't wanna put words, maybe it's the sense of the board, you know what, even at the higher price, it's a good deal. We're paying $475,000. Let's move forward. But what the town manager is moving, is acting on is something not including that kind of feedback. The comment back to us was, well, Miko's reevaluated and we're still looking at it. When, it ought to be a general discussion. I know this was important to the board. How do you folks wanna do? Do you wanna modify your request? Do you wanna modify what you're asking me to do based on, you know, this new, and you're, again, it's totally out of his control. You know, we didn't raise the value of the streetlights. And maybe the board's gonna say, you're right, let's move on. We don't wanna do that anymore. But maybe the board's gonna say something else. And I think this idea of, you know, if they're board initiatives, if they're board goals, we ought to include the board in, in the ongoing discussion and not end up with what, as Mr. Foster asked me, how many touchpoints do you need? Not end up with two touchpoints, the beginning of the year and the end of the year, with a couple of comments in between. That, so that's, that's my point. And it's not made as a, as a criticism or anything of the town manager. It's just, the process needs to have, you know, more ongoing communications and, and moving forward with, moving the town forward. You hear about all these other communities who have all these great initiatives, and we're sitting here saying, but we're, you know, our town's running great, and it is running great, but we're not making new, doing the new initiatives.
Well, I just, I think we are doing some great initiatives, and we are doing some new, this has been a phenomenal year for that. But I can see your point that maybe part of the monthly reports would be a page listing select board initiatives, where, where we are currently, what the next step is. So that might be something worth to add to the reporting. But just because we don't have that measurement doesn't mean that's not existing or happening. So that might be an interesting addition.
Let me, let me throw some mud in the water.
[laughing]
How'd this work when Robin was there?
No, it didn't.
It didn't?
It didn't.
I listened to the meetings. It didn't happen. What you're saying never took place.
Exactly.
It really didn't.
In what regard?
Well, I, I just listened very closely to what Mark said. And I remember, I watched an awful lot of meetings, and I never saw the interaction. She made a brief report, and that was it. And you guys would give her direction every once in a while, well, next meeting, I'd like this brought in. She said, fine, I'll bring it in for next meeting.
And therein is the comment.
Right.
Then she'd say, in the next meeting, she'd, there'd be something change. You know, there was, there were multiple mid-course discussions and adjustments.
Right.
Now, the question is, did we get to the destination? Not any better than we are now. But, but there was a feeling that we were moving forward and we were all in the, in the sinking ship together. We're in the ship going in the wrong direction.
We're all the sinking ship together. We are. You know, I wish-
That's not very accurate.
For the sinking ship?
That's, that's not accurate. There was a lot more communication in between meetings. And I think that's what Mr. Gold may have left out, that much more communication in between meetings, so that by the time you went to a meeting, you were prepared for what was being discussed.
By who?
The town manager.
But Tom, okay.
No, I know it did.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't-
I never did that.
She was on her way. But we used to get, we used to get emails twice a day.
But things weren't getting done. So she was emailing. But the streetlights you've been talking about for 10 years, and Robin didn't get it done. So I think that, I think that what we could do is maybe look towards a process in the future of communication. But I, I don't, I, well, the only thing I disagree with is, I think there are some initiatives that are moving forward.
There's a lot of initiatives moving forward. And, and if you read, I hate to read 17 pages of these reports, but in here-
I've read them all.
There's a lot, I know you have.
I've read them.
There's a lot of stuff that's going on in here. Tremendous amount of stuff. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal. How do you pick the number one thing? We've already said, incidental management of the position. I think that's the best way to describe it, is incidental management. And we're not there when the phone calls come in. And there will be, there will be some problems. There's gonna be corrections that we make. But I'd be hard-pressed, Mark, seriously, to figure what's the most important thing on our table today, the number one priority.
So, so let me interrupt you, Richard. So, this is good. What do you think your, your directive is from the people who elected you?
My directive?
Yeah. Why did people elect you, and what do they want from the select board? We heard tonight from a bunch of visitors what they thought we should be doing.
I've questioned that a lot.
What do you think, what should we be doing?
Okay. I, I think exactly what we should be doing is, is making sure the town is efficiently run in compliance with all the regulations and policies that we have, and that we have, we're meeting the developmental opportunities. We've got the outreach going, and that we're staffing appropriately to meet the needs of this community. And I don't know if we're staffing appropriately to meet the needs of the community on outreach. We're not really moving forward as I'd like to see us move forward. But I think if you look at some of the other communities and look at their organization, they've got some staff specialists in there that are moving them forward. It's not the town manager that's moving all those initiatives forward. It's staff specialists who are moving forward. And you've been in industry, and you know what I mean, on staff specialists, because they take the dog, the bone, and they chew on it all day long until it gets to the finish line.
We just don't have the luxury to have that kind of a staff.
And with our town manager, and I think even with Robin, she likely chews on about 55 to 60 bones a day, and doesn't really fully get to enjoy any of them until he gotta get to the next one. And then, I mean, I know you've been inundated with phone calls this week over town meeting issue, over misprinting the press, and over putting the Blackboard Connect. I mean, it sounded like their office today was almost nonstop phone calls, just explaining to the, to the angry people out there on what we were doing. So you could take, I mean, that's just one of 300, one of 260 days, but today was shot basically with phone calls, answering, trying to appease the general public and not offend anybody. And, you know, if you take, if you take all the recurring duties that we know are taking place, everybody knows they're taking place, and you get them down, how much time does it actually leave to meet the real extra needs of the select board, to keep them informed on all these things, and then make sure you got something that is so, so infallible, the failure that you meet the key objectives of five individual select boards that all have individual needs? I ask you, I don't know how to do it. I'm serious. I know you can, you can have pockets of success, but I think there's gonna be, there's gonna be periods of failure. Mr., Mr. Crane is not doing, doing everything that I want him to do, but I'd be injecting personal preference. And I've tried not to do that. Tried to, you know, keep going with what the board wants to be working on and, and keep nudging Stephen forward on, on those items. Because, you know, there's so many items. I know every once in a while, he just stops and says, geez, I don't know which one I'm gonna work on next. So I said, okay, well, we talk together and we nudge and say, this looks like this is the most important one to push forward at this point. It's not, it's not a fact where he sits around in his office waiting for work to come in. It really is figuring what, what is the next highest priority issue that the board wants done.
But that, Richard, I, not, I don't see that. I don't see the question being, what's the next highest priority that the board wants done? It's, what's the next highest priority I want done? And, and sometimes that's not, not me, 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 you know, as the town manager. And, and to me, that's a, that's a disconnect. And I'll give you the, this, the number one example. You know, why are we spending significant resources working on a regional dispatch system that nobody in, in the select board has said that's something we absolutely think ought to be one of our high priorities? And yet, that got mentioned in, in the reports this month, but yet, the things, the 10 things we talked about didn't. So there's a good example of one of the issues that I'm concerned with. Not that it's a bad idea. It's probably a fine idea. But it didn't make the, the higher priority above some of the other ideas we had. And, and to say that, that, you know, well, that's what our, our town staff wants to do, or that's what our, you know, the state is telling us to do, doesn't cut the mustard with me relative to what the citizens of the town is represented by the five people here wanna set as the highest priority.
That is a performance element. It's external affairs. And we grade him on being able to, to work external affairs. And that is an-
Why, how is, how is working on a regional dispatch system external affairs?
Why would it not be? It's a regionalization of an effort. I mean, this is not, this has not been started in Stephen's office. This is something that's coming to us.
Right. And we ought to have the right to say, we don't have, we don't have the bandwidth to process it right now. And thank you for the, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you, thank you to all the surrounding communities. But we've, we've gotta work on what benefits the town most, which is, you know, putting together services for our community, maintaining our, our budget, keeping the tax rates under control so we don't have to pass a Prop 2 and 1/2, dealing with labor issues so we have good labor relations within our town. Whatever those priorities are, and saying, we're gonna respond because the state wants us to put in a, a regional dispatch system without having shown that there's benefits to the town of Long Meadow for a regional dispatch system.
It's not formalized yet to, to bring that forward.
But, but my point is, Richard, you know, we're spending, you know, I mean, the town manager and anybody ought to have the, the ability and the authority to spend some time on a lot of other things.
Right.
But, but to my mind, as, as long as all the things that we thought were important are getting done-
Okay. What's not, that's, that comes right back to the thing, is that we've got five people here, and they got a joy list of things they think aren't getting done, and some of them don't hit a high priority with all the members. So what is the town manager supposed to do?
Because your job, you put together the list, and the first thing you said is, it's amazing how many of these got multiple-
Right.
So therefore, that's the lit. Those are, the ones that got multiple levels of interest from five members of the select board, you ought to be working with the town manager saying, here's the list that apparently has traction.
Now, I have to work with the select board to get these moving, because you guys gotta make a move too.
But you did, but you did.
That's fine. Bring them back. I'm moving as fast as we can.
Say, here's what's not happening.
Okay. I, I'm a firm believer, and I think you are too, you've been in business for years and years. Every employee must have a certain percentage of their time that they do innovative things that they wanna push forward.
That's fine.
Okay? Call 2%, 5%, whatever the figure is. But I only consider this an innovative push for. I think this is a regionalized effort. And we are trying to go along with the implementation, or at least the research. There's a, what, a $100,000 grant, Stephen, right now?
I mean, it's, if I may, it, it's a grant. And that's one of the town manager duties, is grant writing. At the end of this, the select board will get to vote whether or not they wanna participate in this thing. But that vote should be based on information, on actual facts of what the thing will do. And this is similar to the streetlights. We have retained a consultant to help guide this process. The consultant hasn't come forward yet and said, based on everything I know, this is a good deal, you should take it. Until we get that recommendation, I don't, I don't feel like I'm serving the board or the townspeople very well in bringing it back forward, Mark. The only thing I'd say is, you know, we did get an opinion from town council that could illustrate this discussion. I mean, I would defer to the chair, if he wants to enter in the discussion now. But the goals, the budget approved by the select board, recommended by the select board, approved by a town meeting, the new GFOA budget format has goals for each department. Those count towards the goals for the overall town. I did submit with the chair, with Marie when she was chaired, and during my review, a list of proposed goals for this fiscal year that I felt reflected the feedback I received during my review. They weren't, they were not discussed. So I only point that out to say that I am trying to do this. And trying to hear what the board is saying and have the overall direction of the, of the management of the town pointed in the direction of the overall direction that I believe I've been hearing from the board. And so, even if it's not necessarily a formalized goal document, I still hear these discussions. I still receive, you know, emails. I still, you know, may read something in the paper. But I take all that information in and help use it to push departments to, whether it's a higher level of standard or looking at programs in a different way, because I believe that even if the board didn't take a full, full vote on establishing something as a goal, if it's something that I know is important, then we try and work on it. So I think, if there's one thing I'd say, it's what, what is hard to, it's hard to get clear direction when, no matter what I do, I only hear about what I didn't do. And that is probably one of the bigger barriers for me right now to seeing a pathway to improvement that the board evidently wants me to have. And I feel like we've accomplished a lot, but I just, I don't get any feedback to that direct, to that direction. It's just, here's the next thing you're not doing. So I'm not saying that, I mean, that's, I have pretty thick skin, and that's to some extent the nature of this industry. I'm just highlighting that as an issue that sometimes makes it difficult to see what the direction I'm supposed to be going is. That's all.
Well, I'm equally confused, because I, I've heard what Mark said, what Paul said, I've heard what everybody said. And I don't know when enough information is enough. I don't know where we hit. I can't, I can't hit that point. I understand what you're saying, Mark, but I don't know how to hit that point. Because I know your feelings do not match Alex Grant's feelings, or Paul's, or Marie's. So we're dealing with five individual feeling bases. So, you know, I was hoping collectively, if we said that these are the goals that we want collectively, then we move forward at least as a unit on that. And, you know, a lot of what you've said, Mark, is a phone call to the town manager. And you know that. It's just calling them, say, Stephen, hey, give me an update on this. It's that interpersonal relationship that each member should be having. Ask them about projects that they, they feel certain interest in, or a higher level of interest in other board members. What we have to, you know, what we have to watch is, is to say that we're not in this directive mode that we talked about, where we're trying to dictate methods and means, because that clearly is not where we should be. We should be in a policy direction. And sometimes it's very difficult to articulate what you've just mentioned in a policy direction, isn't it?
Sometimes it is.
Yeah. Because what, what, how do you write the policy where you get just the information you need, not too much and not too little? It's a very difficult thing. And I'm sincere.
You go from 5,000 policies to 500,000, you're the federal government, that everything's a policy. And that's not the way this town should run.
But I'm sincere, because I know-
Micromanaged the policies.
Yeah. Stephen and I have had-
You can only go to the bathroom from 5 to 5:03.
Yeah. The long discussions on this, haven't we, Stephen, is where's the threshold for how much information? Because, you know, as I said tonight, there's 17 pages right here of information in our package on what all of our, what all of the divisions have been doing in this town. And that's a hell of a lot of information to absorb. I mean, you read it. I don't read every bit of it. It'd give me a headache to read all of it. It'd ask me many more questions than I need to be asking. But it was meant as an information exchange to say, yes, there's a lot going on out there, guys. But we should be, we should be dealing really on the high level of stuff, right up on the top of the heap. Yes, Stephen?
I just want to make a comment. I'm sorry, Marie, just about this, about 17 pages.
I think about 20 minutes ago, you were gonna run.
I'm sorry, Alan. I, I apologize.
And I think we've had about 10 comments in the inter-
Go ahead.
But, in any event.
Do you remember what you were gonna say?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
I guess, I'm a little perplexed, because, you know, I think in June, we had an evaluation, and you rated Stephen, I think, almost across the board, ones, one on a scale of 1 to 5. And you've described, you know, a lot of meetings and working with the town manager. I think, I wrote down one comment. You said, you've been nudging forward on items. You've made another comment about there being, I don't know, 10 things that you were working with him-
Right.
-that you hadn't brought to the attention of the board. I guess, you know, what, what's kind of, I, I have no understanding about, or have no knowledge about, is what's been going on that's changed at least your evaluation so dramatically.
I haven't done evaluation yet.
No, no, I mean, no, what I mean by evaluate, sorry for the, I didn't mean the word evaluation in a formal sense. I mean, your, we'll say, assessment.
Okay.
Your assessment from, you know, June to December, you know, what, what are these? You was talking about nudging forward on items. What are the items? What, I mean, what are the concerns that you've raised? How has it responded to them? I'm completely in the dark about that. So, I mean, obviously, something has happened, at least with you personally, that has had a dramatic effect. And I, I don't, I don't, I don't know what it is.
I serve bourbon at our meeting.
And, you know, and I guess, you know, one of the things, so, so what I have to do is assess the things that I, I'm presented. You know, one of the things that I've said is that- that, you know, the town manager, by and large, controls the flow of what I'm seeing, you know? And, you know, so, for example, I'll use a specific example about the water bills that went out incorrectly. That's a big concern of mine. I'm waiting for us to get the complaints of people who say, "Oh, my goodness, I didn't know the water rates were that high." I suspect we may be in a position of feeling chagrined and having to give rebates, which could have a very large impact on our, you know, water and sewer funds. So, and the thing that concerned me was not that, you know, that a mistake was made, it was the process and then the reaction to it. You know, like I said, you know, when I raised it with Stephen in an email, you know, I think I said, "There's something that's unresolved here," you know? And then he didn't respond back. And then he emailed me later to say, "I thought we had resolved that," when I said, you know, when somebody says, "There's an open issue. This hasn't been resolved yet." So, you know, it's things like that. And, you know, what I, you know, don't have is a statistical assessment of how often that's going on. What I can do is assess the reaction to a problem. And, you know, that was an instance where that concerned me, you know, because that's something that, it seemed defensive, it didn't seem to be fully transparent, and it didn't accomplish the goal that we, as a board, have consistently stated as a given, which is that everybody has to know what the water rates are before they're consuming. And the most conspicuous way that we communicate that is through that bill. And that information was incorrect. So, I don't know. I mean, if, if you'd like the board as a whole to have confidence, you know, in your meetings with Stephen, as in lieu of sort of a formal 30, 60, 90-day process that we had voted on, I'd have to understand it better, because I have no idea what you're referring to. You know, when you talk about items and 10 things, I just have no idea what they are.
The water issue, actually, that's been up many times. I think it's been resolved. But I think you bring...
We didn't do anything. I mean, the resolution was to do nothing.
Was that the resolution on that?
The resolution, the rates were right. There was a typo on the date. We actually didn't, I mean, we didn't get that many complaints about it. And I, Paul Pesterzak sat here and explained that to the board. He and Mike Rabel worked directly on it. I didn't, I don't know that I've even seen a water bill even today, other than the one, the scan, the mark-up scan that Mark sent us. I guess what I was actually about to say, and I, you go straight to a good point, that is kind of one of those items in those multi-page department reports. I play a role in much of, I may not do the work, write the memo, make the phone call, but there are aspects of that work that I rely on, on my decision-making and on my feedback to the departments. And to my previous point, it's fine to criticize me for water bills going out with typos on them. You know, and the proverbial buck stops with me, even though I had nothing to do with the process while it was happening, it still is on my watch. But by the same token, many, the many positive things that are happening in town, that your races that you help organize with Barry Jarvis at the Parks and Rec Department, you know, the Wounded Warrior, I mean, the positive things, that, those bucks stop with me, too. And I think, again, this is not, I'm not, I'm not waiting for a parade in my honor to go marching by, and I'm not fishing for compliments. All I'm saying is, when the only thing that gets discussed is what's wrong, it's hard to see what the positive feedback is in the direction I should be taking. I mean, it's telling me what direction not to take is not the same thing as telling me the direction I should take. And I think that rational people could accept that proposition. And all I've wanted to do, and all I believe I have done, is serve the town and the board in the most sincere, straightforward way that I can. And when I've done that, and I have made judgments that weren't good, I accept. I own up to them and I accept them. On issues where are within my discretion, and, or if there are issues within the board's discretion and I overstep, I have acknowledged that perhaps I overstepped. I don't think that has been a two-way street. But nevertheless, I've been trying to be more mindful of what Attorney Martel said near the end of his opinion about that there's, you know, more, that I do need to take some direction and feedback back from the board. But I do believe that, you know, the day-to-day activities are largely guided by board discussions, even if they don't come in the form of a specific set of goals that were approved by the board. If there's a sense of the board, or of specific board members of comments, we are constantly redirecting in very small ways, apparently imperceptible ways, to reflect the feedback I get here at these meetings. But because nothing is ever affirmed as a good step, it's hard to tell that.
Okay, more directly, answer your question, Alex. I think I told, and it's been no secret, I told Stephen my evaluation was a shot over the bow. And I told you that in person, because I said there was some things that needed to be corrected, and there was different feelings that must be brought on. He was in his first year in an assignment, a very difficult period of a time, a first year, a very difficult period of time. And even more complicated is the fact is how we're set up to where we have remote management, to where there's not a direct one-on-one relationship during the day where you can sit and have those discussions, because most of our discussions boil down to where there's a problem. And I, let nobody be mistaken, Stephen's and my meetings have not always been peaceful. I can assure you of that. And you're going to have to walk in my shoes to understand that. But I've not made a total reversal. I, Stephen will understand that I routinely question what he's doing on some things, but I've tried to acknowledge his point. I've tried to get in his shoes and look backward. I also know, as every other member up here besides you, because you have them in the chair, I also realize that when you're meeting with him every week and talking to him during the week, you are much more aware of how much stuff is going on in our community. And the emails that the chair gets that the other members don't get, you are dealing with many, many, many more issues. And that's not to be waving a flag or anything like that. I'm just telling you, it takes a lot of time, and you become fully aware of how much is going on. Maybe that's a little bit better understanding? I think a lot of it is the fact that I have sincerely seen Stephen reach out and try to change how he's been doing. He has been able to absorb, think about, and come back, encounter some of my views, and these are the views that I've condensed from the board. When I see that, you know, like, well, we see interaction in this meeting, I can guarantee you, when there's interaction in this room, the next morning, we're talking about that interaction. Am I correct, Stephen? There's a direct conversation dealing with very specific issues that we try to say, "If this happens again, this is a better way to handle this." Because we do have a fairly complex board up here. We have five very strong-willed individuals. And I think you clearly identify, Alex, the need, like, the water bill need was a very, very important issue for you. Now, other members, it may not have hit that highest threshold, but it was very important to you. And that's the complexities of a town manager trying to figure out where's the hot buttons for five different select board members. And I understand you're going to, you can justify and say, "Well, this is common sense." Yeah, it really is common sense. The bill should have been right. It really should have been. It went through contractors, it went through our staff. There's no excuse for it. Nobody's made excuses for that. It was a mistake. And they're made every day. I think I mentioned to you guys, I got a memo in the government that was from the White Horse instead of the White House. That was official correspondence coming from the White, the White House, and they had it listed as the White Horse. I've still got a copy of it, by the way. So mistakes do happen, all the way to the top lows of our government. I wished, I wished I could change everything. I wish that I could make every board member here smile every time they come in this room, and that we deal with positive energy and positive programming, because we would accomplish a lot more. I don't know what it's going to take to get there. I think we'll get there. I've told Stephen, I'm confident we'll get there. But we have to work through every bit of these issues until we can finally get an understanding of where we're allowed to give a little bit, and where we find our point of rigidity. And I have told this gentleman many times. I said, "It's easier for one person to change behavior than it is for five people," which is telling Stephen, you know, you really got to give a little bit more than you take. Because it's very difficult to change the thought processes and the behaviors of five people. With one person, it's fairly simple. And there's been that type of discussions. You know, when you shut off the personality and try to subtract, you know, try to anger and try to go along, because I've watched some of our meetings. If you look at them in print, some of our meetings aren't all that calm, guys. I mean, they're fairly aggressive. And I can tell you one thing for a fact, I would, there is no way I could be a town manager. What I've seen in the Commonwealth, because it's just, it's not a good position. It's a very difficult position to deal, because there's so many issues and so many personalities and so many, I guess you'd call special interests and needs. I don't know how anybody would meet all of them, sincerely. And I think each of you, independently, would stop and think the same thing, when you've heard what goes on in here. I don't know what else to say. I'm willing to do anything I can to make it work, but as I, as I said before, if, if I can't make it work, then you have a right to make it work. And that, you know, that's the ability of the board to lead forward how you want to lead. Yes, Mark?
Yeah, there's another comment. One of the things that concerns me, and I don't know where this sits, but it has to do with, you said, six personalities dealing with one another, is that, that on a day-to-day basis, the town manager's the one who gets to deal with the public, whether it's people from Quintetuck coming in, or people from Redfern Drive, or people from the Long Meadow Shops, you know, they, you know, they may email me, and occasionally they'll call me, but, but, or sometimes more than occasionally. But, but, you know, it's not the breadth of who the town manager gets. And one of the issues that I've seen is, has not been, or has been of concern to me, I guess, is a better way to put it, is, is that the town manager and the select board aren't in sync. And so, you know, we, and I couch this, Stephen, and this isn't necessarily a reflection as it sounds, but your ability to read us and represent us to the citizens has not been as accurate as we all would have liked it to have been, in issues where you thought that a response would certainly get the endorsement of the select board, and it didn't. Or you thought an action would get the, you know, was representative of something that the select board needed to do, and it didn't happen. Or you thought, "This isn't a big deal. The select board may not need to know about it," when in fact, it turned out to be more of a big deal, and the select board probably did need to know about it. And I don't know how we modify or change that, other than with experience. Occasionally, we say, "Gee, I misread, misread that one." You know, I figured that surely the select board's going to go ahead with closing the road at Quintetuck. And I did all my homework. I mean, you did your homework on that. You did a lot of work. You worked with them for weeks and weeks and weeks, maybe months and months and months, but you just misread the select board, that at least the majority of us weren't thrilled with closing a public road, whether it was the issue of the precedent, or an issue of whatever it was. That was just a misread. You know, it's not that you did a bad job, you just misread us. And it kind of, you know, reflected back to the people in Quintetuck who said, "Oh, we think, we thought we were coming in here to watch the road get closed temporarily." Instead, they came in here to watch the discussion kind of go the other way on them. And I don't know how to resolve that, other than improve communications, which now takes us full circle. And, Richard, you're right, we can call the town manager. But phones work both ways. I mean, when, you know, I can't call anybody else on this board and say, "Here's what we ought to be doing on Quintetuck, and here's why." But the town manager, and this is one thing Robin used to do, and I think Paul alluded to this, before the town, before select board meeting, she used to call me, whether I was the chair or not, and say, "Here's what's coming up, and here's why we ought to take it this way, and here's who's going to be there, and here's why Paul Pesterzak thinks this, or here's why Bob Leclair thinks this, or here's why Mike Rabel thinks that, and here's where I'm going. If you're going to say something tonight, please let me know now, so we've got a, we've got a good answer to your discussion."
Did she do that with each member?
I don't know. I know she did it with me. And, well, she did it when I wasn't the chair. She did it the first year I was here.
She worked the votes.
Follow what you want to, Marie. She worked the votes. You know, but, but nobody walked in here and said, "This is the first I really hear," other than, yeah, I kind of saw it as a paragraph. And like you said, some other people may not even be reading it. I haven't have read that. In fact, I'm working with people in Quintetuck about traffic issues. But the first proposal to close the road was when it was in our packet Thursday, or the Friday before, you know? And so, you're right. We can't pick up the phone, and I'm committing, I'll do that more often. I'm not sure Stephen's going to like it, because he's going to see it as us micromanaging, calling them all the time. But I got to tell you, I can go back over the last three weeks and count the number of emails, on one hand, that I got from the town manager's office, I think. And maybe that's as it should be, because otherwise, we're micromanaging. But if we're going to work the votes, as Marie said, we ought to work the votes.
Yeah, I haven't got many more emails, seriously.
Yeah.
But I do, I do have the opportunity to talk.
It's been a little bit quiet. It's been all because we've met a bunch of times. "Mark, you know, when I submitted my town manager report a month ago, and talked about how often I emailed the show," you said, "No, it's not about the number of times you emailed. Now, we're talking about the number of times I haven't emailed you. Thank you for proving my point again." And I think, you know, I hear what you're saying about the phone calls. That is the best way to do it, generally speaking, is not the way, it was made clear to me early on, that's not the way the board generally wanted to do business. And I decided that, since it didn't seem to be a part of kind of the personality of the board and the culture of the organization, to do it that way, to do, focus on individual meetings, I just decided to do as non-political as I could do, policy recommendations and research. In the case of Quintetuck Road, I didn't know what you guys were going to do. All I did was focus on doing the research to get, to put together a recommendation that I believed in and that our team believed in. And I told the residents that they should be patient, and that it was a big deal for the board to consider, and I didn't know, I never represented them that I thought you were going to approve it. I said, "I didn't know what was going to happen," because I, it's hard to predict, quite honestly, because I knew it was a big deal, and it was something that, as even our attorney has spoken to, doesn't come up all that often.
But your recommendation was a temporary closure.
Right. And like I said, I honestly wish I had thought of, I mean, the hard part for Quintetuck was when 50 people sit in a room who are in this town, pay my salary, and say, "We want this." And everything we look at says, "Geez, that probably is justified." It's hard for me to say, "I'm not going to do that."
Or not going to recommend that.
Or, "I'm not going to recommend it." If, we, to be honest with you, I mean, we know it's a big deal, and we were looking for other ways to handle that. And every time we came to a piece of information or another step, we thought, "Jesus, this may be the way to go," everything kept pointing to that direction. I completely get why it was a big deal, and that's why we put in so much information on it. And I don't want to keep harping on Quintetuck, whether it's Quintetuck, or the streetlights, or anything. That's where I feel like the clarity, I'm being, my performance is being evaluated based on the fact that there are things that I perceive as not doing, or that the select board has perceived that they're not getting to do. And that speaks to that role of what is the select board supposed to be doing versus what is the town manager supposed to be doing? And I, you know, I feel like, whether it's a directive for a study, I feel like as a town manager, I have the opportunity to go through the study and get it in a form that is final before presenting it to the board. I've said this many times, I don't, I don't like doing, and I don't believe in doing half-a-love presentations. And to some extent, doing kind of offline phone calls gets me into that. Because if I say, "Here, I'm at 30%, here's where it stands," and one, one board member says, "Take a right," the other board member says, "Take a left," the other one says, "Go straight ahead," then I haven't even gotten to the end of the policy analysis process, and I'm, and the thing is already messed up. And that's one of the reasons why I honestly believe, because And that's one of the reasons why I honestly believe, because, because you guys are experienced either through your professional careers or in your, or your elective life, and you all approach issues intellectually, you know, there doesn't, there doesn't really need to be that handholding. And if, if there's, if there's a complicated matter, I, I know that the board's going to take at least one meeting to talk about it and that's fine. And I tell people that. That's how you guys, you know, you've said to me before, Mark, you know, we, we need to go through our process and I accept that. I, in fact, I used to, it used to drive me crazy and I would try and argue with you as to why you should be doing it a different way, but I've given up on that. It is your process, I accept that. But again, it's just, you know, it's, I'm not, you may think that you're giving clear signals. The board is giving clear signals, but I'm telling you it isn't, I don't believe it is.
Marie, you've been quiet.
Well, this will be the feminine approach.
I have to make sure Alex didn't have his hand up. He chewed on me last time.
The first spouse did it a different way. And I'm used to my first spouse handling issues one way. So Robin handled things and she talked to us and you could call it working the votes or taking her temperature, seeing what was going to happen. So there were no surprises in the meeting, though there were still surprises every now and then. And the second guy is deciding to do it in a formalized method. And at first I felt a little uncomfortable with it because I was used to the more informal, personal method. But, you know, I'm starting to get into it and it's taken a while for me to get into the rhythm. And this whole idea of policy, creating policies, and I know you say we don't want to policy it to death, but we're, we're pretty informalized as a town. And a lot of these policies have just not been there. And we're starting to do it with the capital planning and debt management. And I think once we get the policies in place, all of this will start to flow better. The issue with Quintetuck, we should have had traffic calming policies in place. So this is an opportunity for the board to step forward in leadership and put those in place. Issue about trees cutting down, putting in tree replacement policies. So even though I, we don't want to micromanage everything through a policy, I think it is the time for us to start doing these policies so things will start flowing down. And a little word here and there makes a big difference on what the beliefs as a board are. And I think we can show leadership that way because the old way didn't work with informal relationships. And we are a pretty serious town with a pretty serious budget and a lot of people here. And I think we have to start going into formalized policies and management. And one of the things you said, Richard, which really struck a chord with me tonight, I really never thought of that, it's remote management. And that is something we don't have in corporations or private business or organizations, and that's remote management. So it is a different animal. We got to figure out a way of doing it. And Mark, I appreciate the fact you say we need to have formalized goal document to work off of and we need to go back to the original goals. So I think there's stuff that we can definitely pick up from these things. And I have to go back to say, Richard, I think you did the 30, 60, 90 and the 29 day and the 54 day because I know that you've spent a lot of effort working to try to make changes. And I personally do see some of the changes. So thank you for the many, many hours you've spent on this.
This has been a kind of a strange discussion for me because I.
It feels like a lot of euphemism, like you just used the word issues. Yeah. I think you used the word issues, items. I have no idea what you're talking about. So, and so when I hear you're working with Stephen on issues, you know, that doesn't help me much. So, and, and I'm sure anybody listening to this would have little idea what, what we're talking about right now. So.
And I, I, I hear you. And more detail, I guess I have to apply more detail, but sometime I'm a little lost for words and that usually doesn't happen.
Richard. I can say, I'm sorry, Marie.
The, the last meeting we had on this, I recommended that we take one, I don't want to say issue, one project, one item of action, one, and break it down to the five elements that we had done the analysis. So we, I'm not sure what we would take, whether it was a DPW renovations, and then break it down and then we would show exactly where the improvements or changes or need to improve are in the different.
No, I, I understand that's something that could be done, but what I've heard, talked about is something that has done, that has occurred about discussions. You've said there's, there's been a 30, 60, 90 day review or whatever. Again, I have no idea what you're talking about, you know, because it's, you know, it's, you know, we're speaking in generalities about historical facts. So that, you know, is it, I'm not, I'm not sure where we go from there, but I'm just not sure what you're talking about.
Okay, I guess, I guess it's likely fair to, you know, to ask somebody, we're, I guess, six months after the evaluation, do you think things are the same, worse or better?
Are you posing that to me? I mean, I guess, well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give due regard for, for your opinion.
No, no, don't worry about my opinion. Your opinion is what matters.
Because, you know, one of the things that you've pointed out is that you have this a different perspective, you have more information, you've gone over things with him.
But you're the client.
No, I understand. But, and, and if I knew what you were talking about, then, then I, you know, that would make a lot of difference to me.
Okay, but.
You know, and I guess, you know, the, what I have, you know, I use the water rate example as something that continues to concern me, you know. I, you know, but, you know, I mean, you, you and other people have gone at some length about all the things that are going on.
Right.
You know, and, and I've heard about items and issues, you know, but I'm not sure what you're talking about. So, you know, I guess what I, you know, I guess what it, to me, what that is not, is what we voted on.
Okay, I guess. I guess then what I, what I have to ask, Alex, and it's what I just asked you, and this is an individual thing, it's going to be each board member has their own answer for this, that's the, that's the crazy thing about it. But do you think we're better off, worse, or the same as we were six months ago in the interaction and what you, what you want from the town manager and the relationship that you want? Is it improved or is it the same or is it worse?
Well, I guess all I can say is that there have been, continue to be things that concern me about the, and again, I'm, and I'm not even really focused on the, the communication per se in the way that Marcus talked about it, but literally, you know, is the railroad running in a good way? You know, like, I mean, how many conversations do we have about the open gate at the DPW? You know, like, it's just, it's things like that, like things that, I mean, for example, you know, we got a, we got a complaint of, or, I mean, I don't know, a concern by somebody in the town about a tree. And what was interesting to me was, I mean, you're on it, right? You went there, you took photograph, you know, you're like on it, you know? And I guess what was interesting to me is that the fact that you felt the need to do that, you know, which, I mean, to me, you know, the first thing of, you know, well-functioning government would be, well, let me pass that on to the person who's responsible.
Well, the letter, see, the letter was addressed to me.
Well, I understand.
And that's why I felt, and I think I tried to explain.
I'm, I'm not taking issue, but to me.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to do the business at DPW.
Right, right.
I felt a commitment to the person who wrote the letter.
Right. And I don't know, I guess, you know, that said something to me, but, you know, in any event.
And when I met, and when I met with the gentleman, you know, specifically, it's a, it's a good point. It was on a weekend and we knew that the emails were going to be sent to Mike and Stephen and, and I said, well, the letter came to me, let me stop by. It was not in my way. I could stop by and take a look at the tree and I, I looked at it and I took a couple pictures and I told him, send them down to Mike. He's gone, he can see the tree too. It was just more information coming in that it was, you know, one of the massive trees, it's got a lot of dead timber on it. But it was a commitment that I felt at that point, Alex. I also communicated back with the board because this was a very odd email because it went to all the board members. So I wanted to let you guys know what I had done so that we didn't duplicate with a lot of emails that may have had, especially inundated Stephen's office or Mike's office with a bunch of emails. That was the purpose of it.
I'm not even being critical.
No, I know you're not.
I mean, to me, it was just, that was an interesting, you know, reaction, you know, because, you know, you know, one of the things that we've talked about generally is the operation of DPW, you know, and.
And we're hoping that will be taken care of in the evaluation.
And, you know.
The tree was scheduled for.
Oh, no, no, not the tree. No, the operations evaluation. Yeah, yeah, we said it was scheduled for tomorrow, this week.
Yeah, it was already. So. I guess, can I, I guess what I'm hearing.
You say?
I guess what I'm hearing is, is as long as mistakes are being made, then it'll be hard for Alex to view the, my performance as improving.
I don't, I don't think it's what he said.
That, that's what I heard.
Yeah, well, that's what you heard. I didn't hear that from him. I, I heard Alex say that he's not aware of some of the things that are going on and more of the details. He has a, a need for information on things. And, and I don't know where that burden, whether it falls more on me, Stephen, or whether it falls more on you. I think it falls equally on every member of the board for the communication because I think we pretty well identified tonight, there's, except Paul, you haven't said much tonight, but there are all different needs of board members. And I think it's, I think it's important that each member have the satisfaction.
Right. I mean, I guess what I was getting at was you've obviously been having some significant conversations, you know, again, about issues and items, and I don't know what's going on there because they're obviously have had a, a market impact on your evaluation, you know? And I take that seriously because you're the chair and you're dealing with Stephen in a way that the rest of us are not, you know? And, and I guess, and I, I think I've been pretty clear about this. This is directed to see, it's not about mistakes, it's the reaction to mistakes. It's the, you know, about the crossing signals from last October. It's not, you know, it's not that a town resident came in and say, hey, a bunch of crossing signals aren't working, it's the reaction to it. That's, that's what I'm getting.
What was the reaction? What was the reaction?
Are you, are you asking?
No, what specifically in my reaction on that particular matter or on the issue of the water bills or other things because it concerned you?
Are you genuinely asking that?
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we have discussed this.
Right.
Ad nauseam in this meeting.
We had discussed it ad nauseam. So the water bill issue was reported on to the satisfaction, I believe, to the rest of the board. The crossing signals were evaluated and, and repairs were made. That report was also given to the board. And so.
That was 10 months later, after several meetings.
They were done, they were done shortly after that, but then they were redone. I mean, that's, I mean, Alex, the bottom line is, keep focusing on the same two or three things.
Actually, let's, let's be clear about this. The crossing signals, I asked about it in March while we were, so this is from October to March. I assumed I was going to see that as a capital project request. We were going over the budget. I asked about it and a little while later, we got a memo saying that the evaluation, because you were just trying to confirm whether the crossing signals really weren't working yet. We didn't even get that evaluation until after March. And the times that I raised it, oftentimes you sort of looked at me with incredulity of like, what are you talking about? Why are you even bringing this up? And it was only in August that we finally got a report that said, we've evaluated them all and now they're working. That's what I'm talking about.
We evaluated them after that town meeting as well.
I'm sorry, which?
I think it's.
It was several months la, I mean, I've got the memos.
It's a misunderstanding about how crossing signals work and how they're designed and what our equipment is, I think is probably the issue there. But again, I thought I'd answered that to the satisfaction of the board, maybe not to your personal satisfaction. You did make it clear in my review that as long as things don't meet your own personal satisfaction, you won't see my improvements performing. And I'm hearing that message loud and clear and that is fine. I just, at least that's a clear thing of where I know where I stand.
Actually, that is, what you just said of your characterization of my views is not accurate. And as to the crossing signals, I can lay out all the documents and we can, if we really want to get into that.
I don't think there's one.
I mean, I guess what I'm, I'm sort of astounded at is that Stephen is suggesting that it didn't take 10 months to address that issue.
It, it took some time. I, I'll contest that. But the issues, I get, I think the issue's been resolved or hopefully it's behind us. I haven't, nobody's been, I haven't been out and checked them lately, so I don't know if they're operational or not.
I haven't heard anything about it. I thought this was.
I think there was, there was a sequence set up when the engineering department was checking it. I guess, instead of reliving the past, what's the future look like? I mean, you know, I specifically asked Alex, and I really, you know, when I was chatting with you, so I specifically asked, is it, is it better, is it worse, or is it the same? And you didn't tell me, but how do you push your feelings?
I mean, I guess I have concerns. I guess I'm, what, one of the things that I've said before is, I don't know whether I'm getting this full scoop.
Is that?
So, in other words, am I, am I really getting the full scoop? I mean, for example, I, I've heard generally about changes at DPW for the better.
Right.
I've yet to hear anything beyond that level of generality. There was one personnel change that was made, which I got information that turned out not to be really accurate. So what that tells me is that the information I'm getting, it's information, is it all the information, or, or is it, or is it even the most important information? I don't know.
Right. Well, I guess I'll go back to the same question. Good, better, good, better or worse? I mean, what's your feelings? Seriously.
I mean, I think I've expressed it in the, I mean.
I haven't heard you say it yet. I mean, you've said a lot to me.
I think it's pretty dangerous to start doing performance review in open meetings.
I'm not talking about.
Sure you are.
I'm talking about my performance.
Performance evaluations have to be done in an open session.
My performance, yeah, this is all open meeting stuff. It was my performance. I said, do you feel that we've made any improvements or are we still sitting? And I'm talking about the relationship that I have with Stephen and the relationship back to the board. So you got to speak up, guys, you can't. Anybody? I mean, if you think it's bad, then why are we going down the same road? I mean, that's clear and simple. I mean, if you really think it's bad and you don't think it's working, then why, we're not going to drive this pony any further. We're wasting time, wasting time with the whole board. No comments.
Richard, I've been doing it and I, I'm the only one who hasn't shut up here all night yet. And now you're looking for me to make more comments.
I was trying, I was trying to get some resolution. I mean, you know, we're beating around something, I'm not quite sure what we're beating around, but I've said before, this is what I've done. If you're not happy with what I've done, make corrections. And that's through reorganization of the board and put me off the chair. If you're satisfied with what I'm doing, then tell me what else I need to do to make it better. It's pretty clear and simple. I can't make it any simpler. I can't deal with the innuendos, I can't deal with the hypotheticals, I can only deal with factual information. And I intend to do that if I'm presented with something that we can factualize and make work. Very quiet boardroom.
What, what do you want me to tell you? I mean, I, I sat here for 45 minutes ago and just unloaded on you what I thought was, were my issues. Now you're saying, what are your issues, Mark?
I didn't say, I didn't say, I didn't say what are your issues. I looked at you and said, how do we make that work? How much information do you possibly need? We went through it tonight. We have thousands of bits of information.
Let me answer for me, but I'm not going to answer for anybody else and that's part of the problem. of the problem. The first thing you say is, "There are five people." My answer is, keep feeding me information, feed me more, and eventually I'll say, "Stephen, back off, will you?" But I haven't, I'm not even a tenth of the way there yet. You know, some point though, I'll do that and then you'll know you hammered me. The problem is, five people are going to have to be at five different, different spots. But that to me is, is, is what the difference is, okay? And that's as succinct as I can be. I read what I get across, I spend time doing this, I take this, you know, to heart, I've spent a lot of effort looking at this thing. And, and, you know, it disturbs me when, you know, citizens of a street tell me, "We were led to believe," and I say, "Well, why?" And they said, "Well, that's what we thought we heard from the town manager." Whether they heard it or not, that's what they thought they heard, Stephen.
They wanted to hear that.
And well, maybe that's what they want to hear. The point was, you know, was it a misread by the town, you know? That to me is, is, yeah, Marie, it's sell the board. You know, you can't over-communicate with me and when you are, trust me, I'll tell you, that's you, Richard, that's Stephen, that's, you know, you know, and I tell you, I read what, what comes across my desk. I read the emails I get and people will tell you when they send me an email, right down to Art Levens this weekend who sent us about the tree, I responded. I didn't feel necessary to run out there and take a picture of the tree. I sent him a note that said, "I'll bring it up with the town manager on Monday and the, and the, make sure that you..."
You didn't have a camera.
I got a camera on my cellphone. The point is that we respond differently, Richard, but, but I had no problem with, with a citizen saying, "For whatever reason, I think the select board ought to know." I don't know why, you know, I didn't psychoanalyze the, the message, but the fact is that, that, you know, I thought my response, I know it was very different from yours, I don't know if it was appropriate or not. I actually copied, sent it to Stephen, I copied in Mike Rabel and on a, I think it was Sunday, Mike Rabel sent me back. I'll take a look at it Monday morning. To me, the problem was, was resolved as far as I was concerned, unless Monday morning, Mike was going to tell this guy, you know, "We're not doing anything," but I don't think that that was going to happen.
Okay, and that was one select board member that was satisfied and we still had four more sitting out waiting for satisfaction. Marie doesn't care, well, you care about the tree.
One was not taking pictures. One was...
Right.
But the point is that we, we do react differently. So, you're saying here, asking, saying, "I'm not satisfied," you know, you're saying to me, "I'm not satisfied until, Mark, you tell me what you want to have done." If I can't be any more clear than I've been, then, then shame on me because I'm doing the best I can to let you know what I think. From my perspective, I would like to see change. That's all.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure. It's your performance.
Yeah. Because we seem to get stuck and I'd like to go home.
Yeah, we are stuck.
Like I said, I've referenced, we had gone up for opinion from town council. Perhaps the next, on an agenda after the new year, we could have the discussion about roles and responsibilities and see if that helps move the needle on where we're stuck right now.
Yes, Marie?
And I think some good things have been said tonight, some stuff, and I'm sure, just like every other meeting, you've listened and you've heard and even though we're not clear and there's nothing, I think you've probably pulled some things away from it. And hopefully, this board has heard that it's, it's, it's a different world from what we had before and we're going to be slowly moving and changing. It's a process, so this has been another step in the process.
I can, I'll give that, not say individual communication, but more offline communication, but I mean, I hope you're not asking me to dance to five different drummers because when it gets into the individual phone calls, that's where I end up. And then it, I know it was in one of the reviews about one board member getting more information than another board member that was perceived as a negative thing other than the chair. And I don't want to be in that spot either, but more offline communication, I'll give that some thought.
Stephen, there's a, there's a very distinct line, which only you'll be able to determine, between dance to five different drummers and synthesize five different inputs.
Mark, that line moves hourly. And honestly, and honestly, if there's one thing I want to push back on, it is totally unfair to hold me accountable for not hitting that line when it's moving all over the place just by virtue of this discussion. And that's the, the one part of it is, I will do everything I can to try and hear what you're saying and improve, but don't say, "There's a line, I'm, I'm never going to find it, Mark." And all I'm going to hear is, "You didn't hit the line." Because that's all I've heard tonight. So, I just want to be, and I said, "I don't want to be confrontational or anything."
But you'll work on it, you'll try.
But in the example of, somebody says, "Turn left," somebody says, "Turn right," somebody says, "Go forward," with the presentation of the board is, "Now, I heard go left, I heard go right, I heard go forward, and when I evaluated them all with my staff, but, you know, but here's the way we're going. We're going backwards or we're going up or down or whatever." But, but the point is, we, we, I don't even hear you say, "I heard somebody say go left, I heard somebody say go right, I heard somebody say go forward." What I hear is, "Our recommendation is we're going up." And what I'm looking for is an acknowledgement, "I heard left, I heard right, I heard this, here's what we synthesized, here's why we did it. You need to understand, I'm, I'm getting your input, I'm hearing you, but here's the way, a reason I'm making the recommendation I'm, I'm making." To me, that's a subtle difference, but it's an important difference. That's all.
I think, okay, fine. I heard you, that's why I think the roles and responsibilities conversation, my recommendations have that be the next one.